All right, first item is the public comment. Bill Foster.
How are you all tonight?
Good, how are you?
Well, somewhat flummoxed, but I'll try to carry on anyway. I'm flummoxed. I just found out yesterday that Susie Blake, who I've known for thirty some years, talked to you about pickleball last meeting. And I was very much surprised, but I was really pleased, although she's with Y and I'm with Nutriom Pickleball Club, that you all sounded like what I was saying on my seventieth birthday right here in 2020, that we need outdoor pickleball courts. And several of you went and looked around and were finding places. We're rebuilding after COVID. We've got a lot of support. We've got some, quite a few people here tonight who all want to see the pickleball courts. However, you seem to like have jumped ahead of me and are already doing it. So I guess really, in the name of the pickleball community, I'd like to encourage you to, you know, to follow this through and get them up and doing, you know, playing as quickly as, you know, we can. We don't have much for senior citizens, and we're finding that, we're not talking about only senior citizens, because we have some twenty-year-olds playing with us. And we're gonna need like, you know, a senior pickleball and, you know, kids probably, I don't know, might be like the baseball or soccer before too much longer. That's the way it's growing, and I don't want to rehash it, because I just saw last night, that last meeting, and that go to pretty much everything I was gonna say. So the only thing I would say is, when we had two courts, it was crowded, and that was three years ago or more. You know, with just with one court on each one, I would say we need at least four for the amount of traffic they ever gonna have. I think, I'll say this word again, I think the council has an image of like a boutique, small-town mecca. And I think pickleball here, you know, out there, it's a stabilizing force, it's good for the health of the citizens, especially the senior citizens. And it's coed, something you don't have too much of, you know, it's, everybody can come and play. So I would ask you not to underplan. I think that's would be the main thing I would make at this point, since you seem to be like a step ahead of me here, and I don't want to waste your time any further. I do want to thank the pickleball club for showing up to support. Whether we're up, we're running, we've been at it for six months, our people are, come up to the community center on a Monday, Wednesday, or Friday morning, or Tuesday, Thursday evening, and you'll see people having fun, laughing, playing hard, exercising, having a good time. It's well worthwhile. And, you know, today, like these retirement communities are planning around pickleball centers instead of golf courses at a lot of places.
That's expensive.
Yeah, really, it is. It's if you want a little cheaper, yes. So I would add, I'll ask for the impossible. When you're planning this, how about putting in like a whole pickleball international emporium out there? I'll ask for more than I want to expect and trust and hope that you'll really give this some consideration, because there's a lot of people that need something to do, and it's, it's a good thing. And come see us, come play with us, and, you know, it's, I think you'll agree. So I, again, I apologize, I didn't know that you'd already had this conversation last meeting, so I'm going to back on out of here right now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Sure, real quick, just a quick show of hands, who is here from pickleball, either Shrewsbury or Nutriom?
I will be.
Will be?
If I find out where it is, I'll come.
Oh, good.
I can know what it is. Little leg or ragging.
All right, any other public comments? Go ahead.
My name's Chris Gavere, I'm with Twenty-three John Randolph. So first of all, pickleball court is a good thing. I just learned about it in Kuwait, so I was playing for the last year. You know, probably not as good as you guys or anything like that, but no, that's pretty cool, that, and I come home and find out like Hartford County's doing it, it's becoming a big thing. Other than that, I'm saying go for it. So what I should, what I'm coming about is, I received a notice sometime last year while I was deployed, but I just wasn't home. Basketball net we had just bought for my kids and his grandkids, right there on the corner of my street, my driveway. I guess somebody got upset that they had to walk two feet around it, instead of like, it's just like a car, you walk around when you're walking there, because there's no sidewalks. They got upset over it. My wife wasn't able to move it, but, so we received the second notice, and I said, oh, we'll take care of it. One of the neighbors finally did come over and take care of it, they moved it into my driveway on there. Didn't hear anything for months, or months later on it, I'm not sure the timeline of that second notice between that, but I know it was a couple of months. I got home on the twenty-sixth, no, twenty, yeah, twenty-sixth of March. Basketball net was still there, kids were still using it on there, right on the, this is my driveway right here. It was sitting right there in the driveway. On Tuesday, the thirtieth, the bureau came by and just took it out on there. I don't know what a ten-foot adhesive is or anything like that, but it wasn't in the streets. So on the sake of, you know, letting children play basketball and everything else, I really don't understand what the, what the problem is here at this time, but I would like to get my basketball net back. I'm asking for it, you guys, and I don't know what has to happen. I don't think a fifty-dollar fee that justified to get my basketball net back that was picked up on my driveway, not in the streets, is justified. So that's what I got.
After you, you got the notice first or second, whatever, to, to move it, and then you, you did move it, in fact, right?
Correct.
Did you get any other notices after that?
No, not receiving anything else. So that's, that's part where I'm kind of confused, that months later, somebody can just come by and, just come by and pick it up, because they feel like, on there, I feel like that, even if that's the case, I don't think that should be the process for anybody, if some kind of notice. As a matter of fact, I don't even think that the letter said anything about coming by to take a net or anything like that. I think it said a fine, I do not believe, I don't have that notice in front of me, I'm sorry. So if I'm wrong, I'm wrong, and I apologize. I'm not trying to mislead anybody, you guys probably know the notices more than I do. But I don't believe it said anything about coming to take it. It just said something about a fine on there, like whatever, dude. I got more things to worry about at that point.
Did the, did the letter at all tell you where you had a move it to?
Um, I do believe it.
Obviously, obviously, you thought when you moved it, you had done what you had done.
So my neighbor, my neighbor moved it for me while I was going on there. My wife doesn't usually deal with that kind of stuff on there. But police officer, when I did report it, he did bring the two letters over, and I did see that, it said ten feet of adhesive. I don't really know what that means, or what ten feet of adhesive is, I'm not stupid, but I just don't know everything in the world on there. But again, I never even read that letter, nor my neighbor was able to read that letter on there, because we just received it, and it said, oh, but we'll take care of it, on there. So again, that's, my apologies for not realizing what ten feet of adhesive is on there.
Do we have pictures from when it was picked up?
Yes.
Is that, I think, that was the, that was the old picture. Yeah, that's, that's still the old.
May I see? Can I see? I'm assuming that's a picture of it? Without, I guess, disclosing too much information?
This is where it was.
It's not with information.
Yeah, that's, why, why, other things are on the, yeah, that's what it's covering. Yeah, so that's my driveway right there. Okay.
So the option is enforce it as it's written, or?
Right, the way the ordinance was adopted is that there's a return to an RFE of fifty dollars. Now, the ordinance references a fee, the resolution says the fee.
But it was adopted after the first notice?
Yes, yeah, and the new notice was sent, the new language.
And I don't doubt that, on that, for the fifty-dollar fee thing on there, on there. I think the issue was, the issue was that this was in the street previously, it was still removed off the street, but no notice was saying that it was not in the right spot or anything like that on there.
So there's no additional notice that, that it was still in violation of the ten feet?
Correct. On there, and I think that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think we were.
He's a couple thousand miles away, trying to figure out if he did remove it far.
I mean, I just got home from that, but, but again, I'm sitting there, finding out in the afternoon, my daughter calls, and she's like, hey, where's baseball? And I said, still there, so the basketball's like on the, on the grass, and like, oh, it would probably blow it over, and then we drove up, and like, it's gone, check the ring. That's on there.
So again, we, the two options, as I see it, are keep everything as written, or if somebody would like to make a motion to waive the fifty-dollar fee?
I make the motion to waive the fifty-dollar fee.
We have a motion?
I'll say it.
Second? All in favor? I'm sorry, discussion?
The reason I said that, I, I feel if you get one notice, and then you should get another notice, and for someone, it kind of upsets me a little bit, for someone to just come onto someone's property and remove something without knocking on your door, or...
So I will give credit a little bit on there, so we did receive the two notices on there.
Oh, you did receive two notices.
We did receive two notices, it was after the second notice it was moved, but apparently not to.
The politeness, I think, would be, you know, because you pay taxes, your taxpayer and your homeowner, is for someone to knock on your door and say, I'm going to remove, you know.
I, I would agree with you on that, but, but just to be clear, you guys did nothing wrong from the two notices part.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
So the second notice part was, we did get that, it wasn't resolved right away, but it was resolved with, I thought was resolved within a certain period of time on there, and moved onto my driveway. But apparently that's not to where it needed to be, on driveway, to where they could still play. My driveway's like a slant, so it kind of sucks playing baseball right there, and it's easier for the neighbor kids to play on it, too. But I'm not trying to blame you guys on the second notice, the point was, I thought it was in where it could be with no issues, and it was months prior to that notice, and then it was just like, it was just taken, like out of nowhere, like maybe in the future, a notice should be given, hey, we're gonna take this, but then this, we're coming this week to take this, if this is not resolved or anything like that, not months down the road from the second notice.
So I, I think, I think we, we sort of learned something from this, and that's another thing I said, why we should, you know, we should remove that fifty-dollar fee at this time, because we're learning from this case.
One other, one other thing on there, I do want to apologize to whoever I talked to at the bureau, I was pissed off that day. I used some language I probably shouldn't have used, but I do apologize to whoever that was, I don't know.
We get like that.
Yes, ma'am, I just, apologies.
Everybody has their moments, everybody gets frustrated.
Are we looking to make a change of policy?
Not looking to make a change of policy right now, right now, we're just, the motion is for the waiving of fifty-dollar fee.
Because...
You've got two other ones on pictures here that look exactly like this one. So if you're gonna relieve it for this gentleman, I suggest you waive it for anyone else who had their obstruction removed.
Well, I, I think the issue he's saying is, he got the letter, but then months went by. He did move it, never heard that, that it was still in the wrong spot.
And, and we do this a lot, and people get, and our councils get frustrated, because someone, you'll send a notice out, because someone is high grass, and then they'll mow it at the last day, and the next thing you know, it's grown up again. So the question is, is how many notices do you want to give before you have to enforce? And I think, you know, we had this policy discussion last month, as do we enforce the ordinances as written, or do we work with people, right? And I think that was what was said, was you want borough staff to follow the rules, the letter of the ordinance, but perhaps I'm mistaken.
That was my understanding, too.
Right.
From, from that meeting.
Well, the reason I asked my question was, obviously, if there is a misunderstanding, or someone thinks I've moved it, I moved it far enough, and then he doesn't hear anything else about it, you know, someone, and again, it gets to be a hassle for borough, because you gotta go out each time and, and send another notice, and send another notice. But I could see where, if you sent me two notices saying I had to move it, and I moved it back five feet, I might just assume that I had moved it far enough. So I, I think that's the issue here, and I don't want to penalize somebody for a misunderstanding, whether it was our misunderstanding or his.
Certainly, yeah, it's certainly your call on that, it's just, you have three here, you're moved, and you may get two other requests. And you'll get that special person that goes, okay, I'll move it five feet, and you don't know what their motivation is, not to.
No, no, it's okay, we're all here.
I'm just saying, you have to understand, there are people that will play that game with you, just to play that game. I, I have no problem with giving this gentleman, you know, a waiver, or maybe you want to waive all the first three of these.
To, to see when, when their notice came, came in and so forth.
What's that?
I said, so we should wait to see when their notice was given, if they received the notice.
My understanding is, the notice was given on the twenty-first of July, or eighth of July of 2021, November thirtieth of 2021, an updated enforcement notice was given on December twenty-eighth of 2021, and February twenty-eighth of 2021, it was still there.
Oh, are we talking about my property?
Yes.
Okay, so.
That's the list that's on here, that's the list that you did.
Now, I'm with you guys on the first two, I'm not tracking any other thing on there. My wife, we would communicate every day on there, especially when it comes to that on there, she's very strict about that.
My question is to the office of why did it take seven months? It was in violation, and there obviously had to be a timeline in the ordinance, right?
Well, the reason it took that long is because the ordinance needed to be amended.
Right.
Talk about advertised.
Yeah.
So did all three people move their basketball things? And how far would you have had to move it to make it?
There were three that were, it looks like there was three that were moved, and there was one, the three that were not moved, and the basketball net was taken away. And there's one other one, it looks like, that was, the gentleman gave it to his, or per se, the basketball.
But how far were, is there any way they can have it at all? I mean, how far would you have to move it?
It just needs to be out of the street.
So which ten feet?
Which varies, but, gentlemen's correct, it is out, in this case, it just needs to be out of obstructing any vehicle traveling, even along the shoulder of the road that it could put in. In this case, it was still hanging out a little bit, and that's, that's the reason it's still removed from the right.
Okay, so now he could put it back, he could, we could put it back if he's ten feet off the, the center line, or off the road.
If that's the right of way in, on that street, yeah.
So I assume that the right of way, there was probably relatively developed fifty feet, so twenty-five foot from the center line, back, would be the back edge of the right of way. So wherever it is, I don't know, the pavement is. We had this discussion at the last, at the last meeting, and my concern was, children playing in the, in this basketball in the street, we have, everybody, everybody, you know, and you haven't been here, but you know, everybody else knows, how many people, how often do you see people in their car with one of these in their hand, or talking on the phone, they're distracted. And it's, you know, simple physics, if you're going, even if you're going five miles an hour, you hit a charge at five miles an hour, you know what's gonna happen?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're going on the pavement. That was my, that was my concern, is children playing in the street, that, and I brought this up at the last meeting, because we had a discussion at the last meeting, and that was, that was my concern. Kids playing in the street, and when kids are playing, they're not watching for cars, they're in the street, because apparently the borough is, the borough is, said this, but if the borough allowed that, borough's condoning said, yeah, it's okay, because we're gonna make sure these kids in the street playing basketball are safe. And you're not gonna do that, it's not gonna happen, because there are too many drivers with one of those, whether it's hands free or not, they're not paying attention, even going five miles an hour, somebody's gonna get hurt badly if they get hit by a car.
Sure, could I point something out, though? So we're also on a street that's like, the only traffic that comes down that street is ninety percent would be homeowners of that street, it's not.
Only takes one car.
I, I'm not in agreement with you there, just letting you know. So it's, there's a difference between Schaefer and John Randolph, as far as like the traffic pattern, and it comes through there on there, I guess, one car does come through, also you're home outside, or he's outside with the, with that keys every day, on there, wherever someone's other plane.
That, that was the terms concern I voiced at the last, last meeting, and I live on a street like that, too, it's not really a through street, but there's, there's plenty of cars that go through there. And, you know, I, when a car, when a car goes through, I'm not looking to see if the driver's distracted, because my kids are grown, I'm not out in the street, and if I'm out in the street, I'm looking. But there, you know, and granted, sometimes they aren't going the speed limit, you don't have a, you, you don't live on a cul-de-sac street, so it's not like you can go out and get it, going to go so far and stop, you know, you can go through, it is a, it's a through street, I mean, you can keep going right out to Rubble Road, or South Schaefer, depending on the direction of them.
Correct.
So that's my concern, children playing in the street, and they're distracted, it, okay, so you want to, that's what you want them to do, you want them to be focused, but, you know, you get drivers with those things that are distracted now. I can't believe anybody who drives a car hasn't seen that happen, maybe, maybe where you are, you don't have to worry about it.
Yeah.
But, but here, it is, I think, I think it's a problem.
You're right.
That's it, so that's my concern, is somebody's child's gonna get hit by a car, and the borough's gonna say, oh, gee, you know what, you know, maybe we should let kids play basketball or any other game in the street, because the street's made for automobile traffic. And, and again, one of those devices combined with drivers that are, that are distracted with a phone, it's a recipe for just wait for something to happen. I don't want to be, I don't want to have somebody come in for the first time and say, you know, I should have done this, you know. That's my two cents.
So we have a motion, we have a second? Do you want to be?
You needed a second, didn't you?
We, we have the second.
You have the second.
So the motion was to waive the fifty-dollar fee, I don't know if we were clear, but we, I believe you were talking about this particular case.
Yes, this case, but we all.
Her motion is for this, this particular case.
This, this case.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
My vote is aye. And motion carries, so how do we go about getting the basketball back? Will be returned.
Thank you very much.
But, and, and maybe we should, we should, we should ask the guidance about where it's, where it's to go, and I, you know, and I don't, I'm not saying you're gonna be.
I believe it said ten foot of adhesive, that's what I think it says.
Well, why don't we create a drawing that in the future, that it's a generic drawing, but that we can include with the enforcement notice?
Okay.
And, and, you know, even if we have to look up the right of way for each street before we send that notice, we can include a small, you know, quick sketch diagram of, all right, this is where it needs to be moved behind, so it's a little bit more clear in the future.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah, my, like I said, my concern is children playing in the street, and distracted drivers with cell phones, and like, you don't have to go be going, going fast, five miles an hour or not, stand in front of a car at five miles an hour and try to stop a car, nothing's gonna happen.
Have we had so many of those issues in the, in Nutriom, or? I've heard some close calls.
Okay, no, I appreciate, I was just curious, I'm here about August twenty twenty, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your service. All right. Next item, I'm sorry, is there any remaining public comment?
I prefer not to have my name in the minutes, because the subject that I would like to talk to you about, I've spoken about before, and the individual that I'm speaking about has threatened me. Therefore, I don't want my name in the minutes that are published on the website. So I will identify myself as a resident of Washington Road.
Excuse me, you're actually on camera?
That's great. Well, then I'm not gonna say anything else. But I would like some sort of update as to the situation on Washington Road that has been going on for the twenty-six years that I have lived there. I've addressed it many times, and nothing has been done.
All right, so then.
I have to say, here you are, removing basketball nets, and this situation up on Washington Road has continued. So I'll have to say.
All right, that's, that's fair, I would encourage you to call back to the borough and schedule an appointment with Andrew, so you can talk off record.
Thank you.
Is that fair?
That's more than fair.
Correct.
Thank you.
I have something that relates to this. I was gonna bring it up later in the meeting, under the code enforcement, but being with what we just had here, and what we just had there, this week, there was a violation of the ordinance within the borough of burning.
I, before we get too far, I checked with the chief, and he said that what they were burning were sticks and twigs in a fire pit, and that is legal?
Not if you do not have a permit, and here's the picture.
No, you don't need a permit to have a fire pit. I can have a fire pit on my deck.
But to burn limbs and sticks, you have to have, that's in the ordinance, correct? You have to have a permit from the fire chief, correct?
Correct, unless there, in this case, yeah, in this case.
And pass that down?
Yeah, a picture like that, yes.
So I, I received a call from a resident, asking what the resolution to that was, and I asked about the resolution today, and there was no fine, no penalty. So I would, and we made this clear, just as our solicitor said last month, that we are gonna enforce ordinances, it's gonna be reported, which it was, it's gonna be investigated, which it was, and it's gonna be followed through with, to the fullest of the ordinance. And I would like the office, or president of council, to respond to the citizens of why that's not being done.
Again, I think in this case, the way the ordinance is written, the authorized agents are the police department and the fire company, to, to actually enforce open burning in the borough, and to provide those permits.
You're saying that the fire chief and the police are writing tickets for violation You're saying that the fire chief and the police are writing tickets for violations of ordinances?
The police department absolutely can. For local...
Okay, good. So why, there was clearly burning going on, there was no permit. Why was the follow-through of the ordinance?
Again, I mean, I'm not saying if this is, this is correct, but the answer to that is, you called me, I told you to call Andrew, you did. Andrew did what he was supposed to do. He called the chief, and they sent an officer out. The officer determined that it was twigs in a fire pit. It's what I got back directly from the chief. In fact, I met with the chief a couple days ago, and I asked him about it, and he, and it was Thursday, Thursday, Friday, and he said, yeah, it was a control, you know, a fire pit.
This is higher than the window of the house.
But I had no picture.
I told you I had a picture. I told the, I told Andrew, and I told you, the residents sent me a photo. So can you read what the ordinance says about burning limbs?
What, what street was this on, Terry?
Washington Road.
Says, open fires may be set with the approval of the authorized enforcement agent of this chapter, provided leaves, branches, and other non-putrescible vegetable matter only are burned. So I guess that would be branches, not twigs, right? Let me associate who the enforcement agent is.
At the top.
So authorize, okay, borough council shall authorize the southern police department, fire chief, first and second assistant fire chief, or line officers of the rank of captain or higher of the Rose Fire Company, and any person deemed necessary by resolution to have the power and duty of enforcement of the provisions of this chapter. So it is the fire department and the police department.
Did he have a permit from the fire department?
Well, the question is, is it wasn't required. By the picture, I would say it's required.
By the, by the, by the ordinance, is it required to have a permit? Should he have had a permit before that officer arrived?
Open fires may be set with the approval of the authorized enforcement agent of this chapter, provided leaves, branches, and other non-putrescible...
You have prior approval.
Right, that's, I think that's the question.
But again, what came back to the office was, he was burning twigs in a fire pit, which is not an open fire. Your picture shows an open fire, but...
That says burning of twigs, burning of limbs.
In an open fire. It's not an open fire if it's in a fire pit. I can have a fire pit on my deck, and I don't need a permit to be roasting marshmallows and burning twigs.
Well, actually, the definition of open fire is a fire in which any material is burned in the open or in a receptacle other than a furnace or incinerator.
You sound like us.
So does that make every fire pit essentially illegal without approval?
And, and a furnace is any enclosed device specifically designed for burning any material for the production of heat. So arguably, a fire pit is a furnace as the fire.
So I bring this up because we made it clear last month of what the office was supposed to do regarding ordinances.
But why do you keep saying office? We keep saying that...
Because the direction was given to you on how to handle.
We did. We handed it to the police department. We don't, according to that ordinance, and we don't have the authority to enforce that ordinance.
That's what the enforcement section says. Southern police department, fire chief.
You're saying we're not doing our job, but we did. We passed it to the police department.
That is who it says that enforces this.
And at the bottom also, does that include zoning or, or code enforcement at the bottom?
Under enforcement, this is the enforcement section. The borough council of Borough of New Freedom shall authorize the southern police department, fire chief, first and second assistant fire chief, or line officers of the rank of captain or higher of the borough's fire company, and any other person deemed necessary by resolution to have the power and duty of enforcement of the provisions of this chapter. So unless there's a resolution of borough council saying that a zoning officer shall enforce, it's just the police department and the fire department that says.
I mean, it, it could easily, when you start a fire with a lot of dry branches, it can easily get tall. I'm not saying not controlled or anything like that, but then eventually it dies down. So if it's, if they were there, they filed their report. What else can they do?
If he, if, if the police were to come back and told Andrew, yep, he's got a big blaze on, and he's throwing more stuff on, gasoline, and it's creating a danger, then we would have said, go arrest him, go issue, you know, we would issue a citation, and he would probably...
We wouldn't, we wouldn't do that.
Yeah, exactly. We wouldn't do that. The police department would do that.
But in other words, do we have any rulings, like if you want to have a fire like that, and you, you ask for a permit, does there have to be a, a pit that is dug with it in, and people staying there with water hoses?
Unless you go up on that fire and you look and see, is it contained, was there stoned around? I have not a clue.
What is the law? Does it have to be in a, in a container, in a metal container?
Has to be enclosed.
Does it have to be, you know, and, and do you have to be out there with water hoses, you know, under supervision? So we probably have to re, you know?
Probably not if it's in a fire pit.
See, okay.
It's, yeah, other than a fire in which any material was burned in the open or in a receptacle other than a furnace or incinerator. Furnace is described very broadly to say any enclosed device, which arguably a fire pit's not an enclosed device unless it has a top line.
But it's a...
We're talking about chinaya or...
It's enclosed. And nor, yeah, normally you put a screen over the top of it.
Unfortunately, this is a factual determination made by the police when they were on the scene, so if in their estimation it didn't fall within that, they within their right not to file a citation.
When I moved, when I moved in the borough, I, I called the borough to see if I got a, a fire, a fire pit kind of thing. And they said, call the fire department. I called the fire department, and they said I could do it.
What year was that?
This is like eight years ago.
No worries.
So this is way before what we're talking about now. So it was on the fire department, saying I could do it or couldn't do it.
So we should do something about it, because if in the fall with dry leaves and everything like that, you know, it has to be a little clearer, I think, when you have a, when you do burnings like that. It's always bothered me, because I can smell them sometimes if they fall around in the neighborhood. So...
Yeah, I, I agree with you. We need to enforce the ordinances, but if the police go and they say everything is okay, I mean, I don't know what else we can do from that point.
Well, you have, you have a couple of options. One, we can rewrite the ordinance to make it...
Yeah, yeah. Make it clear.
I'll be honest, this is a pretty short open burning ordinance for, for a borough.
Yeah.
Really is.
It's not clear, it's, you know...
I mean, I just reworked one for Jackson Township, which is fairly rural, and it's about three pages long.
Yes.
And I know that in Spring Grove Borough, we had a longer one. Dallas Town, we have a longer one. So maybe there, I mean, maybe it's to be reworked. The other thing to do is, is if you'd like the office to have the authority to do that, borough council can adopt the resolution, right, to say that the code enforcement zoning officer has the authority to enforce this ordinance as well.
Yeah.
Now, the other thing, you don't, you may not want them to, do you want the zoning officer, the code enforcement officer to be authorizing fire, or would you rather have? Because it goes hand in hand. One's enforcement, but one's the authorizing agency based on the way this is acted. Again, it sounds like maybe we should rework this and make it a little more strict.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
And if you go after recycling grant funding, you'll need to restrict open burning.
Yes.
That's, they look for that as part of the grant application.
Why don't we put this on the agenda for the next meeting, and then start talking about it?
Well, I don't think there's anything wrong with having the solicitor write a draft ordinance, and then we can put it on the agenda, discuss the draft ordinance, take it, and it'll take less time to do it that way.
What are the, in Jackson Township, for instance, who, who enforces that? Is it the fire chief, police, regional police?
Well, it is the fire chief, the fire marshal, or the Northern York Regional Police Department. Those are the three agencies that enforce that.
And is there, is there a permit process or?
There is. They just adopted one, yes. And they have, you guys don't have it so much here, but they have, where people are clearing fields or clearing out head rows, they have some more agricultural land burning, so some of that comes in. But they had, they got a, they got a recycling grant, and that's where the state said, thou shalt not have open burning anywhere. And also, we had a lot of people move up to Jackson Heights and townhomes, and they thought they could have a burn barrel in their twenty-foot backyard, in townhouses. That doesn't work out so good if you're from the country.
So rewording this wouldn't affect anybody, I guess depending on how it's worded, but it wouldn't affect anybody with a regular fire pit or capacity or...
Well, we could probably make it a little clearer what's a fire pit and what's a permit.
Yeah.
Where what's a chinaya and what's a furnace. My idea of a furnace is something where you're, it's a pellet stove or something like that, where you're generating heat for purposes of heating something.
If, if Dave reworks this, and, and we have a draft, do we want the police chief and the fire chief to look at it as well? Because ultimately, right now, the way it's written, they're gonna have to be responsible and go out and enforce it. And see something that says, hey, I got a problem, because I'm not gonna be able to do this because, you know, let's get it all done at one time.
Andrew enforcing it as well?
I think that's your call.
I, I would, I mean, I, I was gonna ask you that. I mean, we have, I'm, I'm sorry, somebody had a question.
I just have a question, and I'm, I'm not trying to be partisan, but isn't asking the police to go out and check on this, if they write up a fine, does that not mean more paperwork for them? So they're more than likely to let somebody off just because it's easier for them? I'm just...
I mean, I could definitely see that. My, I'm not gonna say issue, but my thought on that is, is what about five, six, eight o'clock in the evening, you know, on a Friday night, Saturday night, there, there's nobody here at the borough? Who, who's gonna go out and call? Is it then in conjunction with everybody?
Well, the same argument could be made of speeding. If you're speeding, if you're going three miles over the speed limit, most police officers will write you off, because they don't wanna do the paperwork for three miles there. So it's really any minor, I'll call it a summary or a driving violation, they have that discretion to write or not to write for that same reason, so...
You, you actually make a good point, though, because if you create an incident, it's going to create more paperwork, and it's also going to create a situation where we're gonna, you as the citizens of New Freedom are going to pay more next year for your police protection, because the police are running around writing up citations for somebody who has a burn, a, a burn in their backyard.
I understand. Well, they go out, but the office follows up with the citation.
I think, I think the citation actually should probably be written at the time of the infraction. I mean, I don't, I don't think you could go back and say, well, the police were here yesterday, and they...
Then it'd become secondhand.
Apparently, apparently, we can't tell them to do that. It's their discretion.
Well, if it fixes the ordinance, it will be able to. I mean, you make a good point by remuneration to our pension, but we've got to have some, they have to, they have to buy into the whole thing that they're enforcing it.
Well, who, what's gonna make them write a citation? If, if that, if that ordinance was in place right now, what would have made him write a citation? What, what are you gonna say about that?
Well, I think that's where the mayor goes in and has to talk to the police and say, this is something that we find important, not this, that, that we, that we find important, and we want to be enforced. I, I think that's, you know, he's our, the mayor's in contact with the police department, and we have to, the mayor would have to go and say that. I'm not sure I even want borough staff, I mean, don't we have to get a warrant to go on somebody's property? I mean, what's gonna happen?
Have the officer or fire chief go out, take the report. There's a violation, it's been investigated, yes, there was burning. Then it comes back to the office, and they write the citation out from the office.
Why wouldn't the fire department write the citation? Why don't they go out?
They can't write citations.
That's the place. I assume they would call the police. Anytime it's a nine one one call, they would, the police and the fire company?
What if they're in Stewartstown, and by the time they get here, the guy puts it out? That's what happened on Washington.
I'm not confident of...
They do not have a fire going on Washington.
We need to strengthen the nuisance ordinance. We strengthen it, but we still don't follow through. We need to strengthen the property maintenance code. We strengthen that, but it doesn't follow through. I'm not confident that rewriting the ordinance is gonna be followed through. It seems to be a disconnect here.
There was follow-through. The police were called. They just, they decided that it wasn't a, um, an actionable item.
But he said that we'll rewrite the ordinance so that they know to follow through.
You can make it clearer as to what's a violation.
There, there's a lot of, we could sit here and spin our wheel in the mud for a while.
Why can't we even allow this?
You, you can't tell what he's burning at in, in, in that picture.
Well, it doesn't matter, because he doesn't have a permit.
He doesn't have to have an ordinance if it's in a furnace.
And, and a furnace, as he, as he said, is very vague.
It's very broad.
The houses are so close together, why do we have to allow this?
Well, because Dave, Dave likes to roast weenies on his fire pit, and my, my son has a fire pit, and he likes to eat his weenie.
Go ahead. I, I understand everybody's concern here. I think what the issue is, the height of the fire, first of all.
The height.
So that was the first part of the issue. The second part is, you, you don't have a definition, you have a vague definition of what a fire pit, permit is. No permit is needed on there, except for an actual burn, which you, which you're not gonna get, which is not gonna get approved in, in New Freedom Town Center, so that's regardless. So fix the ordinance, so it shows the height of the fire, okay, two feet above the fire pit, whatever, and then actually specify brick fire pit, whatever. You guys do all that magic to determine what actually constitutes a fire pit.
I don't really, you have to allow open burning as a general rule. You could say, it can be an inch and a, or a fire pit, no, 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 the three feet diameter has to be covered or something along those lines.
Because if the wind comes and nothing flat, it can get out of control like this. It can catch somebody's armpit or, you know...
So we, we've already asked for some clarification for next meeting.
Okay.
Do you have a bunch of questions?
Yeah.
No. I just wanted to say, as, I'm not mayor now, I'm on disability right now, but as mayor, I've been to that location on several occasions. There is no fire pit that was being burned in the middle of his backyard. I have been there, taken pictures, and I also, on that date, received a complaint from several people up in, on Washington and reported it to the borough manager. I understood by the time the police were there, that fire was put out. We all know who we're talking about. I'm not gonna mention any names, but there was no fire pit. That was an open burn. My understanding is, is illegal in the borough.
That's a question you should take back to chief as to why it wasn't in a compliance structure, or, because then his officer should have determined it to be...
Correct.
Potentially. I mean, we're going off of a zoomed-in picture from a text message, so...
I'm back in next week. I will see chief and ask why it hasn't been taken care of.
All right. Do we have another, one last question in the back? No? Okay. All right. Did you have any other question from us?
I'm gonna try to come up with something a little much tighter, and you can decide who you want to enforce it. I mean, that's a good question, I won't try and think that. See how it goes. And do you want a permit process?
I, I, I think, given what Andrew was saying about the, so given what Andrew was saying about grant money and whatnot, I, I don't think there should be any open burning in the borough, permit or otherwise. Cards them off, put them in a dumpster, and I don't think there should be open burning in the borough.
Can we invite the, the police and/or the fire people to be here for, for public comment during this, when we're talking about this? I mean, they're gonna give better feedback than anybody else.
And if they get a copy of the proposed ordinance, you know, they'll have a chance to look at it and...
It makes it real simple. We just prohibit open burning in the borough.
Yeah.
Okay. When you say, Dave, when you say open burning, you mean any or not?
Again, you guys have to tell them what the limitations are. Do you want people not to be able to have fire pits in the borough?
No, I don't, I don't think so. You're, you would, I mean, people are allowed to enjoy their property. I, I think you want to keep...
I got it. So basically, no open burning for removal, removal of light on purposes. It's for recreational, of a certain size, or a certain kind of container as well, so, does that sound fair?
Oh, what's in zones, right? By zones, right? Just by borough?
I apologize, I'm so new to this area.
It's okay.
Is borough include farm area?
No.
No.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Let's talk about riding farms.
I just wanna make sure, is it a farm or is it not gonna?
Even farmers can't open burn without a permit.
Without a permit. But I understand not having it within the city. I mean, that makes sense, hundred percent sense.
I think, I think with the new resolution too, you need to include the fact of smoke being a part of the nuisance. We went through this with the smoke shop and the cigar smoke bothering one of the neighbors. I shouldn't maybe bring it up, I don't know. But I've got guy two doors down, my neighbor's got asthma, emphysema, when he has a small fire pit that's going like this, the smoke, I can't even keep my doors and windows open. To me, that's a nuisance to my health and I believe part of the zoning says if it is attributable to a health problem, then it is a nuisance. That's a health problem when I have to close my windows and doors because I can't breathe. So that's part of the problem with even the small ones. So keep that in mind, please, Mr. Solicitor, when you're.
I'm not sure how to write that one.
That's a problem, though. Smoke is a nuisance.
But smoke comes with fire and if we're already deciding not to ban fire pits, smoke can be incredibly subjective from one log to the other. If one's wetter than the other, how are you gonna?
If it's a nuisance, though, it's an ordinance.
But what's a nuisance to me may not be to somebody else.
When you can't breathe, it's a nuisance.
And again, I'm different from others, like.
But you can make the argument that an asthma condition is a hypersensitive person that's not applicable to the reason of the person, which is the standard.
I don't have asthma and I can't breathe when that guy's got his fire pit going and it's four feet high.
She would ever teach him how to make a fire. He's not from your free.
Oh, he knows, he knows. He puts charcoal lighter on it, lights it and off it goes.
That's another four hours. That's the fine point, Dave, but no, we're talking about a fire pit for recreation use. So if somebody decides, I'm gonna get rid of a bunch of lizards, but I'm gonna use my fire pit to do it, it's gonna come up.
Yeah.
Because I got a neighbor that does it too. Smoke is a problem when the wind blows the wrong way.
Right.
If you have your windows open, you're gonna plug your lid.
Let me give it a shot and you guys can tweak it. How's that?
Let's, let's go with that. All right. Yeah, I know, where are we? Where in New Freedom Borough? Leo, last call for public comment? I think that was all. Okay. Approval of the minutes from the March fourteenth meeting?
I move we approve the amendment.
Second.
That would be, motion in the second.
Well, we can only discuss it after somebody makes a motion. We never do it that way.
So we have, we have the motion, we have the second, is there any discussion?
Yes. I had a conversation with Andrew today on the minutes. I came into the office today to look into whether pickleball is charged for the community center or not, because looking back in minutes, I couldn't find anywhere where it says they were. I couldn't find anywhere where it said when the community center opened back up and so forth. So it took me over an hour with assistance of Andrew to find out that they have been being charged since 2019 and the amounts. So I'd already planned up bringing up the current draft minutes that we're looking at, just for instance, the president's report and the seven topics, which I believe were important, such as the park equipment is now open for thirteen-year-olds. There was the EMS meeting, the Pinaways pickups, there's townships and Cudor's Township and Jacobus might join the DCEB, you know, study. You're gonna be having a meeting with Phillips Hill. But the only thing in our minutes is a snow emergency. All of that was omitted. And I'm bringing this up because I feel strongly that the minutes are the only thing that we have of what is happening at our meetings and they need to be a little bit more informative on what exactly was brought up. I suggested for Andrew how that can be done, either whoever is willing to give for the president's report, mayor's report, manager's report, recreation report, any committee reports, that you have it printed out and you hand it to him or email him so he can copy and paste it and put it into the minutes. However, Andrew would like to do that, whatever makes it easier for him. But I think that, you know, we're missing a lot. You know, Eric Schaefer, it says Eric Schaefer came to clarify logistics. Well, in one year, maybe when there's a problem with election, what does that mean? What does that mean he came to clarify logistics? You know, it should say that he was coming to get into the building beforehand, afterhand, council decided to give a key, you know, that he's gonna return. You know, I mean, there's stuff there that should be memorialized in our minutes because I'm not, anywhere asking for a, you know, word-by-word dictation, I'm not asking that, but just brief descriptions. And then like, it says for the lady that came to speak on pickleball, it didn't have her name and just a lengthy discussion took place. What was in that discussion, you know?
I mean, we can't. I certainly understand what you're saying and agree with you, we could do a little bit more detail, but we just spent about a half hour or more talking about one item and you can't, you're not gonna get everybody's comments all the back and forth.
I didn't ask for all the comments, but just some meat to the discussion. What was the discussion about? Nobody knows, just a lengthy discussion. Or it says after discussion, well, what discussion? You know, what were the concerns?
Can we refer to the recording and public record?
No.
We cannot?
No.
I would not recommend you do that.
The borough.
Because that's a transcript, basically. Then you have a transcript of every meeting, you have to keep them forever. The borough code and most of the municipal codes will say the minutes are supposed to reflect actions that were taken at the meeting, it's a summary of what was done and reflect the treasurer's report and things like that. And so that's why they're generally this format. We had several municipalities that started doing that, they were keeping transcripts of their meetings. But that's so lengthy, I mean, the next thing you know, everyone is basically, if they didn't agree with something borough council, then they won't pack what three hundred minutes. So when you said this at this point in time, so generally you wanna have, and I don't disagree that there could be more detail, but you don't wanna have a transcript or report to come back to the public.
Not asking for that. Maybe look back in, you know, the last two years of minutes as a reference to how Tanya kept minutes. There wasn't, everything wasn't there, but you know, the meat of what happened at meetings, you know, was there. And I think that whoever's putting in their report by giving Andrew exactly what they're gonna talk about and say means that he doesn't have to dictate it and it would be helpful to him.
Yeah, I mean, if we have a written report at any time where even more than one set of meetings from, from the individuals, that's gonna make it a lot easier to prepare the minutes.
Well, they give you a synopsis of that report, what do you think, like what do you agree?
Kind of like you do with rec council, like how you give the, because in here it says rec council submitted report and then writing it somewhere. But that's, when you pull up the minutes online, it's not there, so you don't, what was, what was going on, we don't know. So the really, the only thing that you would really need to elaborate on is when we have open public, you know, public comment, that who spoke, what the topic was and.
For next time, or even for this time, we could, but for next time, why don't we provide soft copy, send an email with what we're gonna discuss, presidents, mayors, et cetera, and then that would give you the basis to just cut and paste.
And I did a list of the topics that, you know, were missed, so I don't know if I could give this to Andrew, we table these minutes, get this put in there and then approve these minutes next month.
That'd probably be the appropriate way to handle it unless someone wanted to see the minutes for last month's meeting after tonight's meeting. Because they don't become official until, they don't become a public record until you accept it. As long as no one's looking for them, it's not a problem.
We actually host the draft minutes.
Because they're showing a draft.
They're showing a draft, but they would still at least be able to see the draft minutes after tonight's meeting, so that'd be, you know, that's up to you.
Well, I'd like to amend my motion then.
Okay.
That we tabled this until next week.
Next week.
Next week or next meeting?
You're coming next week.
Of course. Next month. Do you, who did the second? So if I change my.
I did the second.
Did you go along with me?
Yes.
So we have the amended motion and a second to go with it. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Vote as aye. All right, next item, approval of treasurer's report for March twenty twenty-two.
I have a question on the general fund monthly expenses for the backhoe repair, twelve thousand dollars. What happened to the backhoe?
We had, there was a fuel lifter pump that went out in the backhoe. That was the first bill. The second bill was they were using the backhoe and the fan and radiator blew apart and then the fan shroud blew apart and took the radiator out, so.
It's not a good thing.
And that's, well, but that's part of going into the manager's report about talking about a capital reserve fund because that piece of equipment is over thirty years old.
That's only to just replace the loses on about a month ago.
And under the sewer fund, there's five phone services for nineteen hundred and ninety-five dollars. What are the phone services for the sewer?
What's the check number?
Well, just through here. Call service. Three seven six five five. And another one, three seven seven two five, three seven seven four three.
Well. So, a couple things. So this one, the four three, that is for print service at all buildings, so that's the bill that gets split between general sewer and water. So that services all buildings.
Yeah.
The other one that you referenced was three seven six five five. That would have been the breakout of the cell phone bill. So for the one forty-five, what did you said, one forty-five, forty-seven? Yeah, that would have been the breakout of the cell phone bill.
That's a thousand and two hundred dollars.
Oh, that one was a reimbursement. We had an issue with a, an issue with one of the employees' phones, we had to get the new phone and we had to go over to AT&T and we had to make that reimbursement, but that's actually coming back because we were able to send the other phone back, so we just did that. So, yeah, it does look like that's the cost of the phone, but that's coming back in as soon as they process the return.
Additional questions? Motion, second. All in favor? Or no?
We did all the vote.
No, we did.
I move we approve the treasurer's report.
Second.
Motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Vote as aye. Frenell, he's still there? Frenell?
You might as well use Don. Yes, right.
Hey, did, how do you vote for the treasurer's report for March of twenty twenty-two?
Oh, aye.
All right. Thank you. All right, improvements. Unfinished business. Review of an ordinance established in residential parking permits along certain streets within the borough. That item was previously tabled.
Yes, we have the signs ordered. They actually should be arriving tomorrow or Wednesday and then Public Works will get those installed. We did two separate signs, both with municipal parking information on it, one with an arrow straight ahead, one with an arrow to the left to place along, place along the road to direct them to municipal parking lot at the end of High Street. So that should take care of that agenda item.
Did they pay for those signs fully?
We didn't. When we ordered the signs, we just, the borough just paid for those.
They offered to pay for that at the last meeting?
Yes, they did, yeah.
We didn't take them up on that?
Well, we just, we just placed the order, we haven't even received it yet.
Oh, well, we asked for half of the sign?
Yeah.
Sixty dollars? Well, okay.
That's sixty dollars, is there half?
Who would?
And CDR volunteered to pay for the signs. They actually volunteered to pay for the signs, I think. We said we'd split it.
Yep.
All right, next item, review of traffic study results on Dickinson Court, parking restrictions, and again, that was previously tabled. Will you need to kick it down this street again or?
Andy was supposed to go out?
I didn't. Do we know, did the engineer look at widening on the, assuming Dickinson goes north and south, if you look at the east side, there's some gray to work with, but you got a light, like a yarn light that would have to be moved. There's a hydrant there, it would be okay, but you might be able to get six or eight feet on the one side. Or the other, the other thing that, and I guess we have to talk to residents about this too, but if all the mailboxes were on one side, there'd be no parking on that side and they could park on the opposite side of the street. Right now, and I went down there today trying to get through and pretty difficult because you got vehicles parked on both sides, almost opposite each other and another one in front on that end, you know, it's not, it's not easy to get through.
The one thing I don't think that they mentioned on the traffic studies, what side they would recommend people parking on?
The opposite side from the road that runs into Dickinson.
Okay.
So it would be, if you're going down Dickinson, parking would be on the right-hand side of the road, not on the left. Because if you parked on the left, you block your line of sight to make a turn.
Yeah, so that makes sense to me. I don't remember, or I don't recall seeing that.
It doesn't, that's just what they do.
Okay. All right, so then.
It usually does say a side.
In this case, the traffic study just indicated that it would be up to council and public works staff to decide which would be best in situations.
All right.
I thought we had decided we talked to the homeowner first, to say there's a problem before we would have to take action.
I think we should send a letter, I mean, there's not that many houses on the street. I think we should send out a letter to everybody on the street and I think we should describe, you know, show a little drawing, describe what the problem is and tell them the, you know, the possible solutions, one of which is put parking on one side, one would be to widen the street and let them come back to us and tell us what they want.
Make that an agenda item for next meeting.
I'd feel better doing that before taking any action, I think.
Yeah, I think so. I don't think, do we need that? I mean, this is just, it's unfinished business. I think that's the action that we need to take. I don't think we need to put it on the agenda for next time. I think we could just do that. And then have, maybe by next meeting, we would have an answer to that.
And the letter, why don't you invite them to the council meeting?
That would work.
Yeah.
Do we need to make a motion or anything, or is that?
No, we'll just, just leave it.
But leave it on the agenda so we speak to other things.
Marge Goodfellow Park Improvements, that was previously tabled. What? What item was that?
That was the sketch plans.
Oh, the plan sketch, okay.
That's just, it was, it was tabled at the time because we were three and a half hours in the meeting.
Yeah.
And Kim wasn't here on Thursday?
Correct, yeah. Which, I don't know, is it already tabled at this point because of that?
I think, why don't we wait, wait for Kim to be back on board next meeting and then we could have a more detailed discussion on it.
All right, council chamber audio, audio and video improvements.
Do we want to table that also? But for Kim to come back?
He got a deal, right?
Do we table it?
No, I don't think we should. The quote's only good until I tell him this month.
Is it, is it?
And Kim, Kim can feel free to chime in.
Yeah, it would be good if you keep that, it would be good until this point.
I'm sorry?
Up until this meeting.
Okay, all right.
Right, that's a good idea.
We're fresh on that one.
Thirty-eight thousand, five hundred fifty dollars and seventy-one cents.
And we actually livestreamed that, right?
You could livestream when we have our sewage meetings and things are set up here. We can have a screen on that wall to show people what's going on. It would just make the room a lot more versatile. You want to speak to Andy?
Yeah, I mean, the, the other thing it does is kind of creates some zones that you're not always relying on individual microphones. It's one microphone that's picking up this part of the room, another one is picking up this part of the room. Everything kind of works together as one system is able to be controlled. And it really does create the room that there's other options for training and meetings, even for the, if someone needs to come in to use in the public to have a training or seminar or something. It just opens the room up for possibilities.
And if you had a PowerPoint display, somebody came in with engineering drawings, they could tie their PC right into the system, put their stuff on the screen, it would make it easier for the public to see. I think it's an investment that's probably good for the next ten, twelve years, you know, life expectancy. You know, if you factor it in on the yearly cost, it's, it's not all that much to do.
And it would replace our recording that we've got now?
Yeah, you wouldn't, they wouldn't need the camera, you wouldn't need the, you know, the microphones would be in the ceilings.
I'm in.
Is that a motion?
I move, I move here, accept it, yeah.
All right, motion.
We have to get a motion in a second.
Okay, sorry.
Maybe come on the call.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
I'll second it.
All right, comment?
Just one question. When you guys did your quote, did you get multiple sources or is that just like a one source, single source?
We had reached out to a couple of different companies originally, but we went back to, back to this company just because of current relationships and things.
No, no, it's okay. I was just wondering because thirty thousand dollars is a lot of money.
Thirty-eight thousand?
Thirty-eight.
Yeah, yeah.
It's cost ours and it is.
Yeah, and the, the system... A lot of the systems are pretty much the same as far as when we, we kind of researched and did this quite a few months back as cost-wise, but.
I appreciate it, thank you.
We, we had two other, I think, bids on that that were quite a bit less. And we were talking about maybe two screens here and we discussed the fact that we could probably go out and buy two seventy-inch screen TVs for six hundred dollars. And I, I just, we wasted all this money for the microphones, for the sound system. It, it just, to me, sounds ridiculous to spend thirty-eight thousand dollars of taxpayer money when there's got to be something that we can use that's a lot less expensive. Shrewsbury did it for five thousand, or for seven thousand. Glen Rock did it for...
I have it right here. In April of twenty-one, Glen Rock made a motion to do the total price of the project for thirty-six hundred dollars. And when I go to their meetings, they are livestreamed out. They, a couple of months back when they had the town hall, they had their slides up there. Was able to show that. Right here, Shrewsbury in twenty-twenty, they made a motion to approve audio and video equipment not to exceed fifteen hundred. And ourselves, back in July twenty-twenty, it was made to spend no more than four hundred dollars on the video equipment here and so forth. So I just think it's a huge jump from four hundred dollars. And you're seeing other boroughs doing it for thirty-six hundred, maybe fifteen hundred also. And it's a huge jump to thirty-eight thousand dollars. I don't think that's a wise accounting of the citizens' money. I think it could be done differently for less.
Additional comment? All in favor? Go ahead.
I almost hate to agree with Erica for the change, but I think it's, it's, it is expensive.
That did sound very nice.
And if, if there's another way to skin the cats, so to speak, and make everybody happy, I understand what we're trying to do and that was sort of like, not a stop yet, but, you know, something that, that we were doing and we put the sound system in is we need to use what we have and mine it with something else and maybe, maybe do it for less. I, I don't believe that we're listening to the price for Glen Rock. You can't be comparing apples with apples. For instance, if theirs is a few thousand and ours is thirty-eight, there's obviously some difference between the two. But what are they and what do we need and what can we live with and what can we live without?
Audio in the ceiling and this and that, and it all sounds great. It all, you know, it all sounds great, but I don't know that we need to go...
This is very big and sophisticated.
To that extent, do we really need two TVs?
You know, that, that really is a big figure now that I'm looking at it. It's a big thing.
Thinking about it, I didn't even be able to see and then everybody else.
I mean, two TVs that are not the same thing in the, in the same room, I don't know.
I will say, when it comes to streaming, Erica and I go to every meeting. There are two, maybe three people in Glen Rock and Shrewsbury that are on their Zoom Go meeting.
Oh, yeah.
From, and most times it's either her or me. That's it.
And, and people attending?
Attending via the live stream. This will livestream. This camera will livestream through our Wi-Fi. Know that anybody ever talked about that. We could plug this into a TV screen and a laptop and have the same thing.
We looked into it and we just need to get more software, software to drive it. Remember when we were looking through that at the beginning?
Well, the software isn't thirty-eight thousand dollars.
No, I agree, I agree. I'm just saying this, in the, in that book, it said you can do it. You just had, we had to add different software.
Right. I did it. I can do it to, to stream it right to my phone. I can, I can operate this from my phone.
All right, so back to what we have at hand. We have the, the motion, we have the second. Bernal, are you still with us?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Just want to make sure since we're about to vote.
I'll vote, please.
Ryan Ross?
No.
Erica?
No.
Dennis?
No to the specific code that we have.
It's just a yes, no.
It's just too much money, the more, the more I'm thinking about it.
Well, let's, let's get through one thing at a time.
Ned?
Yep.
Bernal?
Nay.
David?
Nay.
Inga?
Nay. Too much money.
I have not been doing that. The motion does not carry. All right, on the new business.
Well, yeah.
What are we doing?
As far as directions?
Because, yeah, because I think somebody else needs to take the lead because this has come up multiple times. I've gone out and gotten different quotes multiple times, brought them back. It fails every time. So someone else needs to take the direction.
Of course.
Someone else needs to take the direction and reach out to the companies and schedule appointments and figure out what you want to see and where. Because obviously there's different visions here that are...
I, I think the problem, I mean, if you look at, for instance, Shrewsbury Borough and Glen Rock Borough, I think that they had basically volunteers come in and set everything up. I mean, you know, they bought a little bit of equipment and they had, you know, just kind of like what we did. We had Nate in and helped us set up, you know, the, the system here.
Kim says they're paid at Shrewsbury, Nate is paid.
Nate is paid. They, it takes two people to operate their system. They're paid.
Yes.
Two, two people operate. Well, see, I, I think, I think that's, that's you to set it up? No, to use it every month. Every time you use it. That's where there's, that's where your huge disconnect is. Because this was, would have microphones that would track the people, that camera would turn when you're talking and it would pick you up so that we would know who was, who was actually speaking. I mean, it is a sophisticated system. You pay for it once and it lasts twelve years. I mean, I'm not going to beat a dead horse. If you don't want to do that, that's fine. But I don't know that, I mean, if, if somebody else wants to take the lead and figure out what to do, that's, that's fine too. Who's on the committee, Erica?
I, I believe Bernal was on the committee with me.
I know I was.
You?
And you were.
I thought I cut you off, Andrew, but I believe the committee was Bernal, Kim, and Inga. Audio, visual.
If we could come up with something a little cheaper in these times, I mean, we're having difficult times in, in this country. And I think that this is, when I look at those figures, it's just too much. If we can just, you know, cut it. I mean, I, I bet you we won't have more than five or six people coming. Because I've been at, you know, I've been at meetings too before we came in. So, I mean, we ought to consider that because water is going up. If, you know, we need to tighten our belt a little bit. I don't want to be the, it's, it's fine to have all these electronics, but that's a big, that's a big chunk of money.
So we can only have three people on the committee, right?
What's that?
No, you can have three council members on the committee and the mayor. If you want four.
I've been working on this. I'd love to join the committee if I could.
Well, why don't you join us, yeah?
No, with you, yeah.
If you want, I'll chair, I'll chair it because I go to the other meetings. I know Nate. I can go to Glen Rock. I'll talk to Todd. Todd has the setup up at Shrewsbury Township. I'll take the lead on that if you want and we can all...
Yeah.
Take a look. I think we could do it a lot better.
I'd be more happy to run with you guys.
I located it here, in March of twenty-twenty, President Bobby addressed the following for recording council meetings and made the committee of Inga Andrews, Bernal, and Ray Knoll.
Yeah, Ray never really materialized. Ray's health is not... The result of that committee was what you see here now with the camera. So, I mean, that was closed out because of that. But I agree that if you want to chair, that would, although, although I would try.
You can reappoint the committee now.
Yeah, I think that would be good. Old habits are about to break, aren't they?
So, we have to reappoint? Was it ever really?
Well, it sounds like you had a gentleman that's still over here.
Okay.
Yeah, well, I, I...
So you might as well reappoint so everyone knows who's on the committee.
I mean, we could certainly.
All right, so, one, two, three, and four?
Yeah.
I thought you said...
I'm sorry, Bernal. Bernal was...
Bernal.
Bernal, Inga, Dave, and Kim.
Myself and, and our chair.
I'll chair. I'd be happy to chair.
Sure.
Okay. All right. You want to set an agenda item for next month then or one more time?
Give me a little more time because I'm not back in...
Okay.
June?
I'm out of commission till like the twenty-fourth, so.
So you're talking June?
Yeah, put it on June.
June, okay. Thanks.
We can get together before then, but I wouldn't put it on the agenda till June.
Foundation, so we have something, yeah, June.
We have according individuals? We'll go with that. Okay. That was it for that new business. In your package, you'll find bid information for, I'm sorry, quote information for Solartech. There's two different models on here. They are essentially the same thing. One is a larger one as far as the display. So, again, two different models. One with a price of seventeen thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars with three hundred dollars freight. The second unit is fifteen thousand, three hundred nine dollars and an additional three hundred dollars in freight. So. I'd entertain a motion for one of these units.
Is this going to be just for like the Public Works use primarily if they're working on the street?
Yeah, it's come up in the past. Use for Public Works for street closures to post notices, even down to emergency notifications. Also, community events. It was discussion before about getting the farmer's market information out there more and using something like a message board, concerts in the park, other community events at Marge Goodfellow. Pretty much to be used as another communication tool for the borough and, again, kind of like the audio video, just wanted to obtain a quote, get the information in front of council and go from there.
Then I will make a motion that we accept the larger of the two units, the N D three.
The president had to, they didn't make the motion, had to pass the council.
They can, they can make a motion.
Not under Robert's rule.
A borough council member, why don't they have wave any list powers and what up?
It's in the...
Where member does it?
You can say it be webinar.
Robert's rule?
The Robert's rules that the council...
You have the Robert's rules that says the chairman can make a motion.
Yeah, that's why the minor's standing. Okay. I'll defer the mayor's...
No, I'm not the mayor. I'm just a public.
I'm referring to somebody who's been to...
I'll move it. We, we get some part for the two.
Hold on, do we count that as a second?
Make that, take that as a version.
All right, we'll take, we'll take that as a motion.
I'll make a second.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. We have additional discussion?
How many of these are you looking to purchase?
I need a quote, the quote's for one.
Yeah. One.
So it's necessary, isn't it for roadwork per se? It's for, it's, like, what percentage would you say is for working on roads and that would be used for?
Well, this year with the extent of the road projects, obviously it won't be here in kind of this year, but it would get used for quite a few weeks on, on the road projects. And as well as even backing up to the stormwater work that Public Works have been completing in the last couple of weeks.
What is the warranty on this?
It's in there.
I see it's five, because it says five. What's the cost? Limited. What other, what other fees? What other, what other fees, uh, go into this monthly, yearly?
Well, your, your maintenance on it. Um, so your solar array is usually good, um, for 20 years. Um, the, the biggest consumable on something like this is your, your batteries. And knowing the use that, that we'll be able and then being able to triple charge when we're not using it, you should at least be able to get five or seven years out of your batteries if not more.
What the cost of a battery is?
Uh, for the deep cycle cells, I mean, it all depends on, um, I believe the larger one had four?
Four, four standard lead acid flooded style batteries.
Four batteries.
They're six volt heavy, uh, heavy duty deep cycle.
So when you talk about using this for the road work, shouldn't that be in the contract of the company that you're using to do the road work? Shouldn't that be a part of it, that they utilize theirs?
It can be. Usually what the contract says is that the contractor's responsible to notify individual property owners if there's going to be disruption to the property. And what, what we did, and that's in the report later on, is we used the website, we used Savvy Citizen, and we sent individual letters to every single property owner along the streets that are being worked on this year for the next month. So we try to do the most and this is just another tool to get the information up there so that...
This can also be, this can also be like, uh, farmer's market this weekend, concert, um, N C R, Easter Bunny. You know, we could use it for...
We could use it in the park.
Yeah.
Something.
Just another way to get the information.
Can I ask what the initial cost is?
The initial cost for this one is seventeen thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars, twenty-five cents with three hundred dollars freight.
I got a question.
Sure.
Uh, wouldn't it be better for, I, I know it's more money, but wouldn't it be better to buy two? One for all maintenance and vehicle use, uh, traffic wise? And then the other one could just be floating around the area to put out those messages that you guys want to put out as another means on there. It seems like if you take it from one spot that's being used, you can't use it for the messages that you want to put out on there. So I don't know if that is a consideration or anything like that.
Not a bad idea. If we went that route, I think we should explore how much we use the one first. Whether there's a lot of conflicts of timing.
Because that would be my, like I said, it would be conflicts like that.
Yeah. That's, that's valid.
Thank you.
I think that's, yeah, that, that's a good point, right? We'll see what, how much could be used to be, um... Public Works is not there all the time, uh, but, you know, I, I guess it depends, how much do you want to notify the public? Why? Uh, you know, you could probably get three or four of them if you wanted to do that, but I mean, I think it's a good idea to start with the ones you have.
Um, the other question I have would be around storage. Inside, outside?
Inside.
Inside, okay. That'll, that'll help with, significantly. Okay, um, additional comment? All right, uh, all in favor? Aye.
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 All right, opposed?
Aye.
My vote is aye. All right, uh, second under, second item under new business, uh, consider approval of the volunteer service credit roster for 2021. Uh, so that was also a, a paper in the packets.
I have a point of order, Mr. President.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Uh, if, under Robert's rules, if the chair is a member of the body at his meeting, which he usually is, he has the same rights as any other member, so he can make a motion, he can second a motion, he can debate the motion, he can vote on the motion. That's, uh, under Robert's rules.
Have to tell that to P S A V.
They've been wrong before. Not, not often.
Yeah.
Do you want to take this?
Sure, I can. Uh, you have at your, uh, in front of you tonight, the list of applications for the volunteer service credit from Rose Fire Company. I believe there are nine there that qualify this year. Again, to qualify, you need to have 200 accumulated points for your volunteer hours and your service. Uh, so this covers the period of January 1st, 2021, December 31st, 2021. And on the first page, just have the flow chart that you saw last year of how this process works. Basically, we receive the list, we make sure that they're eligible, provide it to council, and, uh, council approves the application list and then we provide that information back to the applicant. In this case, uh, I believe all but one is requesting an earned income tax credit compared to a real estate property tax credit. So after your consideration tonight, it's pretty much handled by the office at this point.
And just to be clear, it doesn't matter what they choose, we're just approving the list of individuals.
Yes. Yeah, we're only approving the list, not...
They, they can choose what they...
Correct.
Okay. All right, and, uh, I'd entertain a motion to approve the list as advertised here.
What motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Additional comments, um, comments for the foundation. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? My vote is aye. This carries. All right, uh, administrative reports, Colser?
Um, I have revised and provided the stormwater management ordinance to back it in into our engineer to get out. I think we have till September to get that adopted. Has to go up to the state for review. I'm going to take a look at that. It's not light drinking. It's 53 cans or so. So if one comes back, take a good peek through it. Drinks will take a lot of coffee, so you can stay away from getting through it. Um, the other thing I wanted to bring up was, uh, this lady hid in the cage. She didn't want to state her name for the record and her address. A lot of municipalities and school districts are going to where there's a written request for public comment. So you can put your name and you write your address under, underneath, but you don't state it for the record. So that way you can figure out whether residents or not. You can just put the name in the, in the minutes, but you have the information. So there was a, there was a court case out of the Third Circuit that basically said that having, being forced to give your address could subject you to some sort of danger. So that, that's a way of not chill free speech. So if that's something Borough Council's interested in, a lot of places just have index cards that say my name is da, 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 and my address is this, and I like to speak. And then that gets passed up to Borough Council President, Borough Council President can say, okay, Ms. or Mr. Jones or Ms. Smith or whoever it may be. So you're protecting anonymity to a certain amount, but still...
But you would have to call them up by name?
You could, yeah, by last name or just Ms. or Mr. It's, it provides some level. Or you can say number one, if you want to do it by number one.
Yeah, that'd probably be better. It would kind of ease the time.
But if you're, again, if you're streaming, it's not going to much matter. So, uh, it kind of is self-defeating maybe go at it, but that is, that is a possibility that's out there.
Is it, you know, New Freedom resident? But can they stay in the back there, not come in with the open camera?
Well, I guess the question is if they want, I mean, I, I guess that's up to Borough Council how you'd want to handle that because you call everyone else up here to talk to the microphones, so everyone can hear them and then you'll have someone...
You have a port of mind.
It's all logistics. Yeah, I think you can do it that way if you like, or you can keep someone off screen. It's just, there are different ways to address that situation, but I would encourage someone who does have a concern and they're concerned about some of the community approaching them, they should come in and talk to Borough Council, Ver staff, and, and they can bring it up that way. But that is a way the other municipalities and school districts handle it.
Well, except for the public comment that we're, we have at the very beginning of the meeting, everybody does it from their seat and we can, we get it with no problem. So...
You mean you get it on the tape?
No, we, we get it. We hear it.
Oh, we hear it, yeah.
So I think that's probably good enough.
As long as it's verified with the president, if they are a member of our community, then we should pivot them from coming to speak.
Um, so we would need to change the ordinance? Or just be...
Just a policy.
Yeah, public comment policy.
All right. So we want to, let's discuss it at the next meeting or... About policy change?
We have to discuss it. Well, you could work out, I mean, if you would like us to bring back detail, we can bring up how it would work and what it would look like, if that's what, if we took action on it, just to let you know how, how it looks and how it works. I'm just throwing it out there as my...
That's a good idea. I like it.
Yeah. Uh, Colser?
No, I guess the only other thing is, so I actually recommended to Andy, I said, hey, do you want to change the agenda around? So you don't have to pay me to sit here while you get through some of your policy reports. I'm happy to stay. But that was one of the reasons in mind, so if the crowd, if someone was here for business, they could get out earlier and particularly if they're paid for consultants to be here, it helps them. So I'm happy to stay as long as you want. You can discuss it whenever you want, whatever the case may be.
I think you should go home and gargle with salt.
I, I make, I'm, probably can do that. Gargle with, uh, salt water and mess up. So, all right, thanks.
I like, I mean, I don't know how I do it with this, but this is good, I think. It gets us, because I think people, most people come to see these items up front and then the reports are just, you know, making space for one.
Okay.
All right, and I'm happy to stay and I am willing to, but, thanks.
Uh, manager's report?
All right, you have a copy of the manager's report for March 2020 packet. I can highlight a couple of things. Um, did speak earlier a little bit about establishing a capital reserve fund. That's something that we've been working on internally and we should have a, a pretty decent presentation next month to kind of outline how that would look, how it would be funded, the amount of equipment that we're looking at, uh, which is, which is between all departments quite lengthy, so. And basically establish a plan for the next 15 years. Knox box ordinance, we have the letters drafted, we have the list ready. Most recently, what we did is we purchased Knox boxes for each of the buildings, um, so for the community center, for this office and for the Public Works building. To be able to install them, that way when we send the letters out to the property owners, they can actually come see what one looks at, how it's installed, and we can speak to them about that. So obviously, we should be following our own ordinance, so we need to get those in place before we send the letters out. Um, A C H service, uh, we had that set up with the bank that is currently handling with the remote deposit capturing unit. Unfortunately, it drug out entirely too long and we basically said, we're done. Went to another bank that we have a relationship with and it was done in less than seven days. So that is actually set up, ready to go. Uh, if you're on Savvy Citizen, you should have got an alert this afternoon that says auto pay is now available. The form is actually in the news section on your, on the website. So we're going to have those here at the office just to try and get those out into the public. Anybody that's willing, if you want to sign up for automatic withdrawal and due date for water sewer refuse bills, it's pretty much a handles you say never miss a payment again in the future, but that service is now available. So take one bill cycle to enroll, uh, and it's obviously a rolling enrollment, uh, moving forward.
There's no fee?
No fee.
Andrew, I just have a question. You know, in January, when our refuse bills comes out, I know we don't get a discount anymore, but it still is easier to pay the full amount of the year at once. Will we be able to do that on the A C H?
The only way you'd be able to do that is if you would let us know ahead of time and we have to go in and, and modify it, but...
If you're going to take it out anyway...
Let me talk to the, the billing company and see if there's a possibility that we can, uh, see if that works. Good thought.
Just think about that. So if somebody were to move, then they would get credited?
When they move, it, it finalizes the bill and wipes that out. So there would be no, it would regenerate the file to pull on itself.
Yeah, but if, I'm saying if somebody paid, paid in full for the year?
Oh, they get a refund. They get credited at, at some.
Yeah. It'd be nice.
All right. I don't know if that would be something that, no, I, well, I, I don't hope to. Move too many times. It hasn't even been that many.
Uh, also new on the website, we have the public complaint forum up and live on the website. That basically allows residents to submit complaints about roadwork, about billing issues, property maintenance. There's a whole array of topics that you can choose from. That submits directly to the office and then we can track the progress in our, in our monitoring system. That actually integrates into our G I S software as well.
Question on that though. So will that, uh, so somebody calls in, will you guys submit that for them and it updates into the same system?
Yeah, basically that's going to be the master...
Propositor, but it'll be able to be tracked online from you guys or?
Internally, yeah.
Turnover, okay.
That's the same software that we use for all of our, uh, infrastructure improvements as well as building permit forms, rental forms, everything kind of goes into one location. Gives you a dashboard that you can track.
Hey.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Regarding the regional comprehensive plan, uh, as noted in there, we did receive a, uh, a consultant submission, uh, which was actually C S Davidson, local company, to complete that regional comprehensive plan, uh, through the member municipalities. Just as a reminder, New Freedom verbally has joined, but not in ordinance form, has joined. So we're still waiting to work out, try to get with the other municipalities to find when that ordinance was done originally and then replicate that. Everyone will have to re-adopt a new ordinance and then bring New Freedom back into that regional group.
Do we know what our portion, when it's time, or the comp plan's going to be?
Yeah, the, that just, Todd, Shrewsbury Township just figured that out last week and, um, I believe it was eighteen hundred dollars, which when you look at a comp plan and you're talking about twenty to thirty thousand dollars per municipality, it's pretty cheap. No, that's for regional comprehensive plan. Yeah, the reason it's cheap is because there's seventy-five thousand dollars worth of grant funding through two funding sources. Um, now we did have a little hiccup that just came out today. The, it's community development block grant money and because we didn't have enough proposals, we have to go back out to get another proposal. If we don't get another one next time, then that one's deemed approved. So it's because it's, it's federal, a blood grant. Yeah, block grant money. Obviously, everyone saw the notices go out about the stream projects. They were to start today. A day of rain last week bumped them. They should be starting tomorrow, actually up on Buckler Hill. And they are to be finished, um, in a couple of weeks. Anybody have any questions?
And extra asphalt, can we put in a peckelbalk cord?
There you go. I'm sure we can get some.
You had a question on the, on the Trail Town boom grant thing? Said there's 22 applications. That wasn't just yours in the borough, right?
That was through all the trail towns. So that was actually everybody from Hanover, Glenrock, New Freedom, Seven Valleys, York, actually even some in, in Wrightsville. So there's trails that connect in there. So basically any community that has a trail through it.
So next week we find out who won?
Yeah, I don't even know yet.
Cause there were four of them in town one last time.
Yeah. There was a, a final pitch presentation, uh, a couple Mondays ago in the evening and out of that, I haven't received an update, so I, I'm not even aware of who, who was awarded out of that at this point.
Looking back in minutes, the director...
Looking back in minutes, the rector director that we were looking to have has talked about maybe they could be partnership with a community center. But that's not happening anymore, because it's going to be partnership with Shrewsbury Township. Is that correct? This rector director grants?
I guess in my mind, that they would be responsible for the operation, rental, and everything of the community center as part of recognition as a whole.
But, but they would help the senior center too, back in minutes, but that's how it was kind of pitched at first, but I think that went away.
Yeah, we did think that we could add in the senior center, but DCNR, it had to be municipal.
So it's a township, okay. And then, maybe it did come out. If I asked you a couple months back, I guess when the new website came out, if we should send something to Savvy Citizen to alert residents, hey, we've got a new website, go here for information and to find things out. I don't think I remember sending that. Is there, is there something that did come out?
I thought there was, it's not, we can easily do that.
I just think, you know, you spent a lot of time, it looks great, there's a lot, there's something more things they can do now versus they could do then.
Yeah.
And maybe pushing that out there to get the word out of what's going on.
And even if it was sent, it doesn't hurt to send it again, so, yeah.
Just as a note by the way, just because we're not partnered with the senior center doesn't mean that that rector director can't do synergistic things with them, you know, like if they want to have a ceramic art class with grandmas and grandpas and grandkids, I mean, they can, they can still work with them.
But the senior center hired their own, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. But I mean, but we can still work with them.
Sure.
And, yeah, you are correct, at one point, we were thinking we could involve everyone, but going through that grant process, DCNR said, "Had to be municipal."
Any more streetlights?
We're still on their schedule. I just actually looked because we had requests for a new streetlight on another location, so I looked back through, that was in January, when they said they were sending an engineer.
And it means how are we going to replace the one that's out? You said, you just had a request for one?
A new one.
Oh, like a whole entirely new?
Oh, okay, okay.
Is it two, can we add that to Medits list, or has that been submitted?
It's been submitted, but if it would be installed now, would it be? I don't know, that'll probably push it back.
Consultants?
Yes.
Alright, president's report? I don't know, I didn't have any.
Well, a couple of things, if you want. We finally came to a resolution with Penn Waste on the missed streets, and it's basically, it's, you need a simulator?
I'm okay, I'm okay, keep talking.
Basically, it came out to a ten thousand dollar fine that Penn Waste is going to pay, and it comes out to five dollars per resident for refuse. There's been interesting discussions on Facebook, which I know we don't usually talk about, but they were talking about the fact that Penn Waste is going up in other municipalities, and I do want to caution that gas has gone up ninety percent, cost of labor's gone up probably about thirty percent, the tipping fees have gone up, so I don't anticipate that when we get to the new contract, that we're going to get a real big break on price. So, I mean, since it is starting to be talked about on Facebook, I just wanted to mention that.
In the past, you did, they're the old ones that have bid, right?
Yeah, we might get a bid from Republic, but I mean, you know, nobody-
Yeah, I think the last one, somebody submitted a letter saying that they went through winning the bid.
Yeah, well, Republic did not bid last time, no.
How many misses is it before they are penalized?
They're really not allowed to miss at all. The problem is, is that, you know, we try to be good partners, as always, and they are definitely good partners. I mean, they provide dumpsters for the carnival, they provide, they provided free dump, I'm pretty sure it was a donated dumpster for the concerts that we had last summer. They always give us donations and whatnot, so we were very lenient with this last go-around because of COVID, because of drivers being out sick. So hopefully, we've seen the end to COVID, but I mean, now they're talking about another grid, I mean, so.
So Stewartstown is having this problem, and in their contract, it is six missed homes, and they get to take a nice chunk off their bill. So we don't have anything that says, oh, you miss three homes, six homes, ten homes, or a street. It doesn't say anything like that.
Oh, yeah, it is, I think it's, it's per, it's per dwelling or per collection.
The problem, not necessarily a problem, but it allows them a period of time to remedy that, which is the next collection date. So in theory, you really need to miss two, which is the case here, that there were two back-to-back misses of collection.
Did they say why they were missed, or how they were missed, or what happened to them? I mean, there are, obviously, there are people that put their trash out too late, say, oh, my trash was missed, but I mean, apparently, this sounds legitimate.
This was just, this was just, we're not coming. Very much.
It's like we don't have the drivers.
Stewartstown was the truck broke down, people didn't show up.
And I think we can all appreciate that, but at some point, it has to.
Yeah.
So if they do miss a pickup, is the homeowner call the office here, or they call Penn Waste?
They need to call the office here, because as long as that truck is still in, we can get, and for the most part, most of the day, there's, there's two trucks down here as far as garbage and recycling, so we can get, call the manager and get the truck back in that area. We have been pretty successful with that, but if it's later in the day, there's a good chance it's going to have to be the next collection. But we still have been, as there are requests of Penn Waste and meeting with them, we've been documenting that internally, keeping track of it to make sure it doesn't occur multiple times in a row.
And, and they do have cameras on the trucks now, so if they claim, like, if they go to my house and I say, my trash was out, they have, they actually have a picture of my trash can, okay, so, and a date stamp and whatnot, so they can show that they, you know, whose fault it was. If it's my fault, then they don't show to pay, but obviously, if it's their fault, they should.
And I hear you correctly, that each household is going to receive a five dollar refund?
Right. And the office will take care of that automatically.
Well, I'll start calling you guys. I did it once, but I mean, it happens. Apparently, the way they do it in my little area is confusing.
I think the trash is due this month, it's coming up this month.
Next quarter, they were just mailed. Yeah, they were mailed, but the rebate's going to go on after everything is sent, just because of timing and trying to work everything out.
The only other thing, we talked about the EMS meeting, are you still there for now?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we talked about the EMS meeting. There is an EMS meeting on April fourteenth at two o'clock at Shrewsbury Township Building. We're going to have representatives there. Last time, I talked about Act eighty-four, and the fact that insurance companies can pay, like, if I have an ambulance call, they would pay me instead of paying the ambulance, and then the ambulance has to come to me and say, can we have our money? And I go, no, I went to Vegas, or whatever, so, so that, this is, this is a good thing. It'll block up that loophole so that the insurance companies will pay directly to the ambulance, and that'll, that'll save a lot of money, something like in excess of fifteen thousand dollars. I'm going to just jump right into the manager's report. Okay, a couple of things happened. First of all, we were a little bit under our time for the time period from two twenty-seven to three twenty-six. So we, we did pretty, pretty well as far as our obligated PPU's last, this last period. Couple of things happened. There were some bad guys, three of them, casing Alexander's Jewelers and gun bunker. They actually went into the gun bunker and purchased ammunition for the nine millimeter that they had, and the police got wind of it, they stopped them. They actually have the guy roll a joint on tape outside the gun bunker. So they stopped him for the drugs, they found the loaded nine millimeter and masks in the, in the guy's backpack. They couldn't get the two guys, although they're still investigating, but they did get the one driver, whose backpack it was. So that was some very proactive policing. The gun bunker called the police. Trudy Zampier from Alexander's Jewelers saw them casing the place, so that happened. They also brought up a, I think everybody on council has, this sheriff's, and this is kind of a neat thing. I mean, we've had in the last five years, I think we've had two people who went missing, disappeared, and this is for people who have a tendency to wander off. It could be somebody who has a disability, it could be someone who has Alzheimer's, but this basically tracks them, and it's in conjunction with the York County Sheriff's Office. There's a small charge for the maintenance of it, but our police department will be cooperating with them, and this is a radio frequency transmitter. Some places, you know, when you go into an area that doesn't have a, have cell service, your GPS doesn't work. Well, this works. Even if you're down in a valley, they could pick up the radio signal and find you. So if you have a loved one who is prone to wander off, this, this, you know, whether they're an adult or a child, this could be something that would be a real lifesaver.
This, this is a bracelet?
It's, yeah, I think it is a bracelet. Yeah. The police department voted to purchase a new Tahoe. It's for the K nine. There's actually no cost to the taxpayers, the K nine program is entirely self-funded through donations. So the money that they collected for the car will be donated back to the police commission, and the police commission buys the car. The police commission also voted to front them the money. They don't have the money right now to equip the car, which is, I think it was five to eight thousand dollars, but they will be selling the old car, so they'll be getting money for that, and plus they have donations in the pipeline coming to them. So they're going to buy the car and equip it. It was really an important decision, because cars are very scarce right now, if you try to buy a car. So they only had, like, I think, a day or two to get the car, so.
And they said, was that the last one left?
Yeah, it was the last one left, yeah. So chips, right? Chips. Really, really important thing. I mean, I know Erica and Kim have both put just tons of time in on the IGA. It's the Intergovernmental Agreement. It came to a close on the last meeting, and they're putting together the final comments. They're going to turn those over on the nineteenth to Peter Ruth to go off and put together a draft IGA, which again is the Intergovernmental Agreement. That will go to the police commission for the May meeting, and then they will distribute it to the councils, hopefully for their approval and any final comments. So that's, it's very kind of a historic date. I mean, it's four years in the process. So. Something that's a little bit important, if you know anyone who lives in the Glen Rock community, they're having town halls. It's kind of in the vein of taxes and what taxes they can cut, but it's falling back on the police department. And I think the twenty-seventh of April, seven o'clock, in the Glen Rock Ambulance Building, there's going to be a town hall. They're not allowing us to go and talk. You have to be a member at Glen Rock, so a member of the Glen Rock community, so it has to be actually in Glen Rock borough. So that's very important. It's twenty-seventh of April, seven o'clock, Glen Rock Ambulance Building. Tell your friends to go and voice their opinion, unless they're not prepared, so they can still. Do you have anything?
I have a couple of things. You forgot some of the most important things here.
Go ahead.
They chased a flock of turkeys that got away from the Amish.
And the emu.
And an emu. Yes.
They found the emu?
I believe so.
Yeah, it was the guy from Liberty Mutual, it was his.
Officer Smith had the heat sensor for that K nine unit donated to him, so that if ransom is left in the vehicle, Officer Smith is away, it gets too hot, the doors will automatically open.
Yeah, that, actually, people who have pets would probably get something like that.
Yeah. And then there was a very moving letter that Sharkey read about a resident of Glen Rock that had a mental, emotional breakdown. He was in search of safety, he felt he needed help. This is a January, middle of the night, it was soon past midnight, midnight, three AM range, forty degrees out, no jacket. He walked seven miles from Glen Rock all the way around. He was coming up Camel Road, as he made the curve there, he saw K nine unit sitting at the firehouse, and he walked up and he put his hands up, and Officer Smith came up to speak with him. This, this man wrote a very moving letter on how sensitive Officer Smith was with him, with, with the mental state that he was in. Officer Smith placed him in handcuffs for their, both of their safeties, he said, and transported him over to the hospital in York. But it was a very moving letter that he, that he wrote in appreciation of our department and the officer for how he handled the situation, and I just think it's a huge testament to the officers that we employ here and that protect and serve our communities daily.
I think that's, you know, just, just as one quick thing, I think that's the difference that you see between, not that the state police aren't wonderful, they are, but that's the biggest difference you see between the state police and SRPD. I mean, SRPD is our own personalized police department that live and work in our community, and that's, that's the difference.
I don't know if I mentioned, it was forty degrees, no jacket, seven hours walking, he said he was drenched in sweat. I mean, seven miles, seven miles walking.
Yeah.
Forty degrees out.
I think that's all.
Alright, engineers report?
Just if there's any questions.
Any questions on, on the engineers' report?
It could be, it could be an arcade pay. Do you want to talk about that? Just that's it?
I have a question on the past work that they've done, which I'll bring up later and. I was just curious, going over minutes, in 2013, we paid for a complete GIS bathing system indicating sewer and water lines. Is it for eight thousand, seven hundred dollars?
Yeah.
Is that what we just did again?
We did, we were able to use that as a basis, but it was very segmented, it was not complete, so basically, the only real way was to go out and collect all that raw data again. But we were able to use some of the maps and intertwine some of the information that was collected in that 2013, 2012, 2013.
It was supposed to be complete then, but how come it wasn't complete? It was supposed to be complete then, but how come it wasn't complete? Do you know?
Not at all.
I don't know.
Yeah. Plus, it was using, it wasn't using Esri software, which is pretty much globally accepted. It was using more of the, more of their software for data collection, which doesn't even exist anymore.
Is that software available, the software they use now, was that available back in 2013?
Yes.
But they chose to use their own?
Yes.
I didn't see it in minutes. What did we, when did we authorize this? And how much was it to get this done in 2022?
Well, it actually was done, it was started 2021. So it was broken up into water, sewer, and stormwater. And again, the main reason for stormwater is with the anticipation of Amish four coming down the pipeline. One of the main things that they look for, the first things they look for is a map. And we didn't have a complete stormwater conveyance system map. So we needed that to occur. And then with the projects, Carterland Franklin and Maine Constitution, there was no real database for all that information except what was done before, which wasn't usable, so we had.
But weren't they just dug down in the same spot? I mean, we replaced what was there, we didn't move it ten feet, or we didn't move those lines.
Well, there were, there was some relocation of service.
There was, okay.
Yeah. So all that, pretty much all ties together. But it was, yeah, water, sewer, stormwater, raw data collection. And then they updated, we didn't have an updated concerning map that we could use. So they went through and created the interactive map, which is on the website. And then you can manipulate that through data collection.
Will we have to do this again?
No.
No, we're done. We are done mapping it for you.
The only time we will have to do something new is if we do a project and relocate something. The other maintenance issue is, so as the sewer crews, as they're out televising, flushing, we record those as maintenance items. So that goes in the GIS database. When Public Works is out doing catch basin cleaning and televising of stormwater, we're recording that. So that just keeps building. So it's not that you have to do it again, but in order for it to be beneficial, you've got to use it and you've got to keep the records up to date.
Do we pay for like that software to do that every year, or is this a sub thing you're talking about?
Update is pretty much done internally. And once we get through, we're still buttoning up some things. But every employee will be training how to use the system. But there will be select employees that actually push the, pushing changes. Yeah.
So is there a fee to use this system?
There is, and we just paid a renewal for the one Esri license, it was five hundred dollars per year.
So per year, five hundred dollars to use it. Do you know what the outlay cost of mapping new freedom over again was?
I'd have to pull that, I don't recall.
What about a new development? Is that part of like their plan that gets submitted, where the locations are?
Yeah, yeah, that would get submitted as part of their.
So they essentially do that work, so we're not?
Well, basically what happens is we're able to digitize those maps. As long as the ads builds are.
Right, right. They don't always, right.
Any other questions on that, on the engineering? Water?
I know Donnie Wazey will be here tonight, but we did have a meeting with engineers as well as DEP regarding the addition of caustic soda at the wells. And we'll be looking at changing out those pumps and injector lines and try to stabilize that a little bit. Right now, you're getting a lot of calcification when you're adding that caustic soda into the water line. It's creating issues at the wells with constant maintenance of valves and pipes clogging things up. We're working through that. Like I said, not with DEP, they're basically on board to say, yeah, you can change your different chemical feed pumps and hopefully that'll solve the situation.
Are we using a chemical that the pumps aren't designed for? Or is this just part of a regular, is this just what happens in maintenance?
Well, it happens, it's happening with this type of pump and injector and the caustic soda. So the hope is that we switch to a much, and it's a pretty involved pumping system. And it doesn't need to be, it needs to be more simplified. And the injector needs to be in the flow of the water instead of sitting on top.
There's no mixing tank or anything?
Well, the, I believe that the inside.
They had inline, they had inline mixers.
Right.
They suffered the same fate as the pipe itself, the buildup of calcium minerals on the mixing device. It's just a bunch of fins that, you know, the water has to take a path through there. And yeah, theory, most of the time, it's working pretty well for some other chemical. But even now, they're down to twenty-five percent cost. That same problem built up in there, they had to take it out.
At the last meeting, you were going to meet with Sunnecro on their large water usage for many decades.
Yeah. There were other, I was there too. I thought it went very well. I think that they have a plan to section off and improve the area that they were experiencing most leaks, which right now is completely turned off. They did make a couple Band-Aid repairs, but you know, right now, it comes down to they need, they're doing more fundraising, more grant seeking to be able to make repairs to open those sections back up. But they're also looking at removing some buildings and simplifying some.
They've had like what, a seventy-five percent decrease?
Yeah.
Will those be repaired before the people that live there in the summer come back and ask if they turn on?
So that's a whole other section. So the area with the summer cottages, it's kind of the right side as they're entering. The section where they were experiencing other leaks is more.
On the road?
Yeah.
Yeah, on the front street.
Yeah.
So they have the water outside, it's snowing in there now.
Yeah, they're looking to put, they did have some RV sites in there. And they're looking to relay those RV sites out and maybe. But that's off at this point. And that, that also services some bathhouses where they had some leaks as well.
What about, I think I remember seeing somewhere, somebody talked about meters, putting meters on those homes or some, something, some gauge or something, I don't remember what it was.
Well, there's one, there's one meter that services the whole problem. Our, our meter, yeah.
It was in the Minnesota, to locate where leaks are.
Oh, we did, yeah, we did have public work staff go out and help them locate lines and locate some leaks. And that kind of led into them terminating some areas where they had. So once our staff assisted them, they were able to segment some areas out.
Do they have any timeline of when they expect these kind of, do they have so much money, they get started now? But they're still, are they waiting? And is there any timeline?
It basically has funding allows.
And they, didn't they say, Andrew, they have to wait till some of these campuses are gone at the end of the summer? So then they can start working without, without any interference.
Yeah, they're beginning to ramp up at this point for spring and summer programs. So they can't really be in there digging trenches and relaying everything. So I think their hope was, if they can still, they have a lot of funding requests in now after Labor Day. I think was when they were trying to possibly tackle some of the larger water and sewer line replacements.
They're looking, I think you said, end of April, beginning of May to turn water back on?
Is that the time? To the.
To those sections, yeah.
To the cottages, yeah, but I.
To the cottages.
Right, yeah.
What happens if their water usage shuts back up? When they turn that on?
I think meeting with them and the leadership that they have in place now, they will, they will either fix it immediately or shut off service to that area.
They seem very tuned with what was going on, what had happened in previous years and with previous groups. Like they've got a much better handle on things now.
Is this a different leadership team right now? How long have they been in leadership today?
Directors, other two.
They swap out frequently.
Yeah, Dustin's been there, I believe he started.
Two years.
About a year and a half.
I know it's been going on since the nineties, so the people, it hasn't been the same people this whole time that have been.
No, it hasn't been the same people. But I think, I think honestly, we can say they were, you know, you've identified the problem and they're working on it. And that's, I don't think we could ask for much more than that. They've been very, very cooperative, so.
They had a full set of plans, they had everything staked out on site, which, looking back through documents, I don't think I saw that.
None before.
Yeah, so we're, we're still ahead.
Well, they're trying to market it to do more things. I mean, the new, the new guy's really expanding their influence and getting stuff done.
And is there any update of North Water Contract from the last time?
The only update would be that the way it reads right now is the initial term was a twenty-year term. It says that you need to provide a two-year notice upon the expiration of the initial term. It does, it does not specifically state what that termination needs to be in any renewal term of ten years.
Twenty eighteen.
Twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-eight would have been the ten-year renewal term. So if you go off the two-year, obviously you need to provide notice by twenty twenty-six.
Is that appropriate to meet with them, or do we still need more information, or are we meeting them?
I don't know that what, I don't know what more information. I mean, it's only that little paragraph in that whole agreement that really speaks to termination of service. And I don't think it's per se a termination of service. I think it's more of a possible reduction or an emergency measure.
Yeah, worst case, it's going to be that we give them notice now and in two years, we can decrease. You know, I think that we have to start somewhere, right?
Well, I guess worst case would be you give them notice now and they still won't let you out till twenty-eight.
I wanted to say, I thought we have it now. Because last time I asked you, you said it was the solicitor had one view, you had another view, but how can we move forward?
That's up to council. I mean, I can almost guarantee North Water is going to fight. And that's up to council to provide direction.
Right. Obviously, we don't need the water, we haven't used it since we got it. I think we leave, I mean, our goal would be to leave the connection in place for emergencies, but.
I mean, we do use the water we're paying for.
We do use it, but it's not really necessary.
I just, before somebody thinks that we're paying for something and not giving.
I see what you're saying, yeah, that is true.
But with everything you're like, we could reduce that.
If we could get it for, if we could get it through our own system for free, I mean, there's really no reason to pay for it. It's not worth it. Yeah, I mean, yeah, there is a trade-off. There's break even somewhere in there that says, you know, if you keep using their water, the pumps will last a little longer and not using as much chemicals, blah, blah, blah. I guess we need to do that cost analysis. Get Donnie involved and do the cost analysis to say, yeah, we really want to terminate or no, we'll just let it go the way it is, because it's, we're not, we wouldn't be saving that much money to do it.
Your cost analysis might have too many variables though, because you don't know if they're going to say, okay, you now you only have to take ten thousand or none.
Couldn't we at least have that conversation with them, see what options?
I mean, a conversation would be something like, we haven't used your water in the however many years we've had the connection. We're thinking, we just want it for emergency. You know, do you want to just charge us a rate for having the connection? And I can't imagine that that would be significant. I mean, all the pipes are in place, you just, you know, you probably have to go exercise the valve every once in a while and make sure you don't freeze out, but other than.
I, I know when, when I worked for Dallas, you know, Water, they had, it's Indiana and Queen Street. The water system comes down Queen Street to a point and York Water Company comes up to a point. So they thought the same thing, because they buy all their water from Red Line Water Authority. It would be nice to have another source of water. So they went to, they went to York Water Company and they said, how about we just, we just make an interconnection there so that if there's an emergency, you've got another source. Well, it hadn't been built yet. And I think part of the reason is, you know, you're working, not to do it for free. Either Dallas, you'll put the, put the connection in there.
But it's already built, it's already there.
The pipes are there, close to each other, but they're not, they're not connected.
No, we are that, we're connected.
Right, and they've, they've tried that, and you know, I guess my experience is they're not easy work with.
Yeah.
I would at least ask the question. They might say, we'll do it for half.
Keep, keep your expectations low, that's.
Oh, yeah.
We can reach out.
So it doesn't hurt, it doesn't cause anything to ask a question.
Yeah, why don't, you need a motion to do that?
Do you go in for a contract and want to not to say, well, would you, I mean, can't you go in a little more formal part of the contract? We're requesting this?
We can. It's, it's all interpretation of that paragraph, it really is. And I think you can read it different ways. But again, it's, we can.
Well, interpret it your way, reach out to them and let them tell you, you interpreted it the wrong way.
Wasn't the, didn't the solicitor say that we're within our means of doing this?
He felt that the two years applies to the renewal term as well. Which would mean you would have to give notice to be out by twenty-eight because it already renewed.
So if we give notice next month, we still have to stay until twenty-eight?
That's how, that's how your solicitors interpret.
You interpret it.
I'm not, I don't have a legal degree, but I, I interpret that it doesn't state about a renewal term termination. Therefore, I think it's up for debate. I think it's a gray area and it's not clearly defined. That's why.
Sounds like we need an Intergovernmental Agreement.
Tell me, let's form a.
Well, we had a meeting with them, with our solicitor and their solicitor.
Yeah. I think, I think we just ask the question and then they can come back and say, yeah, no, you think this. And then at least we know where we're at.
Say, no, you're interpreting it wrong.
We'll set it, we'll, we'll begin discussion, at least.
All right, that was, that was water, wastewater. Excuse me? Park and zoning and code enforcement. Already had the packet. Gone over most of those issues. Anybody have any additional questions, comments? Brunel, you still ticking? Brunel?
Yeah, I'm here.
Let's hope it, whether it didn't blow up anymore. Rec. All right, we'll go over the rec meetings. The meeting was pushed up by a week because it's scheduled on complex, it was held on March 30th. But it was April the meeting. The big item, farmer's market. They are in discussion with the fire department about combining their chicken barbecue with the farmer's market. There will also be a flea market that will be held the fourth Saturday of the month. The flea market, I don't, I guess the Lions Club has always done it in the past. I don't know if they're still doing it this year or not. But this one will be from the fire department. The farmer's market will begin on the fourth. The, the farmer's market will begin on the fourth, uh, fourth Saturday of May and will continue with the schedule of the second Saturday and the fourth Saturday of every month. They're still looking for vendors, um, and they are going to be checking with Gil Ice to see if they're interested in coming out and being one of the food trucks for some of these events. Tennis, um, just a note about tennis, they, they're continuing to have that. Tennis will begin on the first Tuesday after school ends, estimated start date is end of May, being the thirty-first. Uh, the program will run for six weeks on Tuesdays and Thursdays, nine to ten and ten to eleven, and Friday evenings from six to seven. Uh, the adult tennis program will start sometime in May or early June, will run every Saturday from nine until ten, uh, and that will last until it gets cold outside. Pickleball continues to be a success, um, program for REC, receiving four hundred and seventy dollars in income, um, prior to expenses in March. I do wanna note that I informed them of the pickleball, uh, that there is a pickleball committee, um, that is meeting to discuss where to put the pickleball courts at Marge Goodfell Park. So, I think we have, you're the lone survivor from the pickleball group, only the, oh, only two, okay. So I have some additional information that'll go on, uh, after this. Uh, the parade, uh, save the date notices have been sent out to the fire department, uh, or sent, have been sent out and the fire department has been notified. The grand marshal will be Kim Butcher, uh, we will be mailing out registration forms in May. Concerts in the park, um, Andrew has helped develop the sponsorship flyers and letters with them. They are still working on some vendors for those, um, I think they have most of them pretty well nailed down. Uh, nothing from the children and teen report, uh, parks, um. They were asking if there's any way that we can do some shade over the playground or an area around the playground, maybe like a mesh net?
Obviously, the shade structure is gonna be a better choice there in the long run.
Yeah, as opposed to like a tree or something like that.
Yeah, especially around playground, dealing with a lot of clearances.
Yeah, um, so, I guess, do we need to, we don't need to vote on anything like that, can we get like an estimate?
We can, yeah, general recreation provides, provides the playground, they provide shade structures as well.
Okay, yeah, let's just note that with a lot of, um, moms, uh, being there with the younger kids, um, it'd be nice to have a shaded area.
Would it be like a little pavilion?
Um, no, he's, it's like, like a mesh.
Triangle sometimes.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what they mostly, let's see, my neighbor has one over at his patio, um, but something, something, something in that. Okay, I don't, I think she added this, but they have since found out that the Lions Club will be planting several trees in the park during this month.
They will be, yeah, they're, we're actually down with them, they're planting five trees that were donated and we're tied those into repairing buffer that was planted.
Along the creek?
Along the creek, but we're gonna push more towards the alley and the, uh, previous building that was used for bathrooms. So kinda dress that whole area up in that bank. Donnie informed me that there used to be trees along that bank anyway that were removed at one point, so.
That's been a long time ago.
Yeah. So we're gonna reestablish and kinda extend that, that buffer along the edge of the playground.
Do you know what kind of trees they were?
It's gonna be, uh. Oh, and sugar maple, uh, red harvest maple, and then, uh, swamp barge. Yeah, that's the white, with the white barge, and then you tie those together, and that was, that was the trees that were donated. Been a couple different to choose from, but we met with an arborist and kinda laid everything out.
All right, and that was all for the pickleball meeting, now.
Ronan?
Oh, go ahead.
I think you missed one thing in there about Mary Ann Metwood's, you know, maybe you can bring their barge and stuff.
Oh, yes, yeah, that was, because they decided to have, I'm gonna cover that, but you are, you are correct. The Freedom Green Group, um, was of the opinion of not having it down at the, having the, the market down there, uh, because of space, um, the potential to tear up the grass. So they will, they will continue to be at Smith Woods. Everybody should have a pickleball committee report, um, I thank Andrew for drawing this up today. So the basic, um, so the members of myself, Ingo, Brunel, and Rich Garvey. The, what we discussed, uh, the other week, and we were kinda rushed on getting this together, but I wanted to have all the information for this meeting so that we could kinda get the ball rolling as quick as possible. The pickleball. You and your chips and pickleball. Oh, man. So what we discussed were things like the location, um, we decided it would probably be best to fit it between the tennis courts and the well pump, uh, the wellhouse that's along, is it Playground Avenue? Along Playground Avenue, um, and that would align with the current courts, uh, the, with the current tennis courts. The area that we'd like to develop would be sixty by one hundred and twenty, which would allow for four courts. Uh, again, that would, that would minimize anybody's time to, um, I think what your, your point was earlier about people having to wait and only having three courts up at the community center? You do have four up, all right, so that would keep it the same. The other thing we discussed, uh, was the type of surface, um, I, what, uh, Rick called a composite, uh, there's, uh, concrete and asphalt. And those are listed in the, the order of, of what we would like to see, um, but this one is one of those things that we're gonna, um, have to evaluate based off of cost. Composite meaning basically what the tennis courts are already made of, um, it, composite's the wrong term, you'll have to excuse me, but, um, that's, that's the name that he used.
Yeah, there's, there's a couple different options there as far as different layers and, and almost like a rubberized surface as well.
Surface should match the standard colors, um, basically matching the tennis court, uh, to tie everything in together. Lighting is preferred and will, uh, increase utilization, meaning nighttime, um, not a lot of people are gonna wanna be out there playing pickleball on a July and August day. So again, uh, that would be, uh, preferred, but will be one of the items that we'll look at based off of cost. Ideally, a pickleball area would be surrounded by an eight-foot fence that will catch loose balls and ensure safety inside and outside the court. Uh, installation of a windscreen in conjunction with the fencing increasing enjoyability and aids in keeping the courts clean and free of debris. So again, this is something that I never would have thought of, but you're playing with a football ball, that, that ball's gonna move in, in a slight breeze, I would imagine.
That, that's important, also, uh, is a noise control feature.
That was mentioned in, in the windscreen, that provides noise control.
Placement of additional security cameras would ensure protection, um, we, we do have cameras in that area that could potentially cover that. So if you'd like, like a copy, um, you're more than welcome to it.
Thank you.
Did you have any, anybody have any other questions?
Is there enough room between the tennis court and pickleball courts for people to walk and play in the gate?
I tried, I tried to keep about five feet of distance there.
Or a mow to get by between here?
Yeah, I mean, we could.
You would want, well, if you have access, you would wanna pave that, so it's accessible.
Yeah, essentially make it a walkway, uh, but I tried to keep it about a five foot, so I don't, I'm not gonna claim to have a lot of engineering, I did this on Google, um, Google Earth. So the, the, the court that you see on this picture here is, is the sixty by one twenty with the approximate court size. But I tried to keep what I think ended up being a five-foot path between tennis and pickleball.
Oh, you did good, I think. Andy, you know if there's any drainage issues on that end, it's.
That's the only thing, um, Donnie and I would discuss in there, we do have water line there, and we just need to make sure that as far as drainage issues, there is a, an outfall there as well, so. It's still the best location, we just need to make, make sure we're not putting over any top, any, over top of any utilities and we're not interfering with any drainage.
The, um, the location would also provide, I guess, we'll say some parking there, but there's, um, uh, I guess it's all gravel or stone with the, the well pump area already. Um, we would have to add an additional walkway to make it ADA, that's right.
It would help improve accessibility, yes.
Yeah, um, basically a paved walkway from the, the parking area to the courts. Any other questions?
Do you have a copy of that, I could have now?
You can have this if you'd like.
Here's an excellent idea.
Okay, there you go.
You gotta bring out.
Looking online, it's anywhere from eleven to twenty-two dollars a square foot. So what we're, we're target, targeting is, is all grant money, so it wouldn't cost them at a cost of any New Freedom Borough resident per se, if the grant came from York County, then obviously county, county money.
Do you have a estimated time of completion?
Um, I mean, right now, we, we wanna get estimates, that's, again, that's why I wanted to try and get everything together for this meeting so that we didn't have to wait another month.
Does that, does that cost with the lights and everything you talked about, or is that just?
I think that's, that's why there's a range, um, but that was getting figures off of, uh, off of certain websites. So obviously, if you just stick with concrete, no lights and.
And the last quote was twelve-five, that last quote was twelve-five, so eleven, you know, that's better than the last quote for courts.
Oh, that was.
At Bunker Hill, you got that quote, it was twelve-five.
That was just, that was just putting me on the hard surface only.
Surface, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Well, we have to get the prizes for the netting and all that, you know?
Yeah, well, that, yeah, that was the other thing I'd.
That's very expensive, the netting, I understand, you know?
Um, the, the nets would be hard mounted into, into the surface, just like the tennis court, so there wouldn't be anything to set up for take down. Is there any?
I said twenty, twenty-two dollars a square foot.
Oh, that's what I.
Yeah.
That's.
Hundred, hundred fifty, sixty thousand, yeah, on the high side, very, very high side.
Yeah.
It's more than twelve-five.
So, anything else that you'd like to see, any questions, comments?
You know, we own four portable nets if you wanted to save money.
Was it?
But, I mean.
There was a motion made in twenty twenty, I don't know if it applies to this, about they would be responsible for lines and net.
I think that was in reference to the Bunker Hill.
Just, okay.
Yeah, I think, cause that original motion was to pay for half, the other half would come up with, come from pickleball, and then they would have to set up and tear down their, their stuff and make their own line markings.
So then who, who would get, have to purchase the net, is the net included in this, or?
I mean, that, that would be part of the, the quote.
Basically, if you're looking in that range, that's gonna be the, from, from excavation to putting the net in place, that's gonna be final, ready for, ready for play, basically.
It's a lot larger than, I guess, why we should apply.
Yeah, I mean, I.
You said the price.
I'm not sure what, you know, what the next steps the council would like to take. My recommendation would be to, to get the engineer on board and start laying out and making sure that, uh, you know, obviously we can hit elevations and, and putting together and giving a profitable cost, so we can have a better idea.
Are you confident we can get a grant to cover it, I didn't realize it was such a large amount to cover that amount?
There's multiple funding sources that we can, we can go after, but it will delay the project. It's not like we're going to apply next month and get funded in a month, it's, you know, you're, you're talking about probably a year until we would get through it. There, again, there's other funding sources, like you mentioned, only after some yourself, show funds, um, but looking at the larger scope of time, the different funding sources together, it's gonna be, there's gonna be some time as well.
Did your committee discuss at all about putting the, the tent lines on the tennis courts to give them a place to play?
Yeah, we did bring that up, um, and we decided against that, um, in favor of pursuing this for, for right now.
That's like a year out.
Yeah, that, that, the timeline, I did not.
Well, there's other options, I'm just, I don't want, I don't wanna say it can be done right away.
Yeah.
But looking to do this to move forward where it's grants, it's grant money.
Preferably, yes.
Preferably. Do you have other options that you wanna speak on, or?
Well, the other option too is you can utilize a combination of grant funds along with in-kind services. So if there's things that our staff can do, we can use that as a cash match for in-kind services. So, we'll say a hun, it's a hundred and sixty thousand dollar project, you get a grant for eighty thousand, you could say that, and, and obviously, I'm just using round numbers here. You could say that forty thousand dollars of that is going to be in-kind labor services to excavate the area, to install the fence, to put in any stormwater facilities or pave the path for the walking trail. Pave the area for the handicap parking space, and then you could say another, the rest balance would be actual cash that the borough would have. So, you can take a project, a hundred and sixty thousand dollar project, and in theory, outlay forty thousand in cash. Because you're, you're still paying that employee whether they're working on, on that or they're doing something else, so that's, you can offset some actual cash out in that way.
But you can also do some fundraising, and you truly come up with some sort of fundraising to bring some cash in, can you not?
You can.
Can't you not totally waiting all this time for the grants?
I, I mean, I have to be, you're gonna have to have a committee or a group that's very aggressive.
A group that would get together, do some heavy-duty fundraising, and you're gonna get some cash. Say twenty thousand dollars, if you say eighty thousand grants and then the twenty thousand dollars, maybe some businesses or, you know, maybe you have some ideas.
Does your group have any funds available that you raised, since you've been here in twenty twenty, have you done any, or?
We, uh, just dues.
Okay.
Registration dues.
Are you looking to do any fundraising to contribute to this as your?
You have to understand that, you know, because of COVID, we've been dismantled and we've only been operating, we're in our sixth month of operation. We have not, we don't have, really have a structure yet to do that.
I was a little confused, uh, last month, I had asked, there's the group at the community center and then there's the group at the Y, are you all one group?
No.
So, no.
We're not connected at all, except that we've all played. We all used to be New Freedom Pickleball, like when there were lines on the court here. And I, I'd be remiss in not saying, as long as it's the topic's on the table, painting a tennis court, it's, would be really cheap, and we could do it ourselves.
Why, why did you dismiss the, putting the lines on the tennis court?
It's just, that's what we discussed and decided to pursue, um, a separate court first.
But if it's gonna take a year, something like that could be done earlier, right?
Paint the lines next week.
Think of the four courts there.
I mean, you can't, I mean, I, 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 does anyone remember Mary Beth Dammel? I mean, I spoke with Mary Beth because I ran into her in the, uh, in Sobels, but, um, you know, she said that you can't go to a court in Baltimore County and it's not painted for pickleball. Uh, you know, the only place, you know, that you, you find where it's strictly a tennis court is if you join a private tennis club. And I, I mean, I, I realized, hey, two years ago, I was not in favor of putting lines on, on the tennis court, you know? But this is such a ground swell, I mean, it's grown like forty percent in the last year, uh, and you've got all different age groups playing pickleball. I, I think we would be remiss in saying that our tennis courts are special, so we don't, we're not ever gonna put pickleball lines on. I'm not even sure after we put in the new pickleball courts that we don't leave the pickleball lines on one of the courts so that it gets some extra use. Uh I think we have Judy Smith here, she was talking last group. Okay, I'll make it quick. You're looking elegant. But, you know, she said that she goes by, a lot of times, the courts aren't being used. I go by, a lot of times, the courts aren't being used. I don't see any reason why you wouldn't want to give access to the rest of the citizens to being able to use, you know, the courts when they're not being used for tennis.
A big piece that we're missing in this is those younger players that work. Because you have two nights, unless you've expanded it. Only two nights you can play at the community center. Only two nights you can play at the Y. And I think they're the same two nights. So people like Jenny that want to get involved and learn how to play, there is no place for them to go. So at least if they had the court in New Freedom, they would be able to at least start. You'd have, you know, and you you'd even grow even more. Because now these working people are pretty much left out.
Yeah, and you've got two tennis courts, but on one tennis court, you put two pickleball courts. So now you have a tennis court and two pickleball courts, and it gives you some flexibility for what people want to play.
Jenny, did you have your hands up?
No, somebody else answered my question.
Okay.
Go ahead, Phil.
Uh can I? I I the painting, putting the lines on is done in a a light color. I only have a few of these, so. Pass them around, but you can't even see the lines. And I mean, you're talking about making huge savings in money, and you would have four courts, which would be like this.
The the other the other thing that was mentioned, and I didn't realize this, but they're different heights, right?
Nets are slightly different heights, yes.
If you use, if you made four tennis courts, you're, we're using our own nets on the tennis court.
Because you'd be in a different orientation than this.
You have a tennis court, and that would be the the barrier. And we'd be playing this way, one court, and one court be the other way.
So you'd be set up perpendicular to what the net is.
And we use our own net.
And and the net costs about, there's been, while I'm talking about it, you know, um just kind of a onus on the people. But it doesn't, a net only costs about what a driver costs, you know, play golf.
It doesn't take up.
Not much. Well, okay, we have, we have like, I know, I know, we had like six or eight people playing during during COVID, and four of us had nets.
So I I got one question on that, though. So if you put the nets out with tennis nets and stuff like that, uh obviously, those are those portable nets you're talking about.
Yeah.
So who's responsible for uh putting the nets away or wherever they go, storing it?
Bring your own net.
I'll be responsible.
No, 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 well, obviously, it's the city court or Barrow Court or whatever. Somebody's got to be responsible for it from the parks and wrecks.
Yeah.
Now?
They bring their own net.
So I would say, I want to go play pickleball, and I just want to come out and I know there's a pickleball court.
Good two-hour workout.
So I have to go play nets and.
Yeah, you'd have to bring your own or for fun, or whatnot, they're they're playing if they have a league or whatever.
Right, the only reason we went this way, let's be be honest, last year, there was a hostility about damaging these beautiful tennis courts. I think that that played a major thing in our thinking, that we were looking at long term because it is a wonderful, and I'm really anxious to take lessons and do this. So so we thought we'd see this because it is the future. I mean, you see magazines, you see articles, I think it's a great sport, and this old bag will be out there. But that's why we 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 looked at what it would cost to do it, you know, for long, long term. So then our next meeting, we can look at this and see what the cost factor here is. We were just beginning.
Worst comes to the worst, pickleball people with Pelham tennis nets. You know, we're only talking about inch difference, so.
Okay.
We that we did before, we played on the tennis, we played on the tennis nets. Uh they're a little bit higher, but.
They actually, they actually made a flat you can put on the net that pulls the net down and doesn't cause any damage.
But that's that's all, that's all we did it that way.
And the cost for the lines, for the lines on the court is is minimal, and it gets.
We could do the labor for free. Go ahead, Ranel.
Oh, Ryan, when we talked, I'm pretty sure, I think you just said a little bit ago, that we decided that if the it was going to be too long before the other courts could be built, that that lines on the tennis court would probably have to be done in the in the interim because other than that, it could take, it could take a year or four to be able to be used.
Yeah.
Okay, good example, if you want to see a tennis and pickleball where they do go, the Georgetown tennis courts, which look like your tennis courts, have pickleball lines painted on them.
Cockeysville Senior Center has four on two tennis courts, like what I would propose.
So I mean, you can see it in this area.
I saw that.
My dentist goes to a private tennis club in Baltimore County, and he said they, he pays thirty-five dollars an hour, he leaves, and the pickleball people come in. So I I think it's just the way it's going to be.
Yeah, it's fine. Off of one tennis court, how many pickleball courts do you get?
Two.
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 You you can, or you you can get one, or you can get two. And it's foolish not to get two, because the center, the net for the tennis court serves as a backdrop, and the fence serves as a backdrop, so you've got, it's a beautiful setup.
I mean, you know, I I don't know how many tennis players there are in New Freedom, but let's say that there's fifty. Let's say even if there's maybe a little more than fifty, you've got more pickleball players than that.
And those tennis players will all be pickleball players. I'm serious, they they will.
Yeah, you're right, yeah. So I I just, I just.
Okay, next meeting, we'll talk about that.
Well, you don't have to wait till the next meeting.
Why don't we just decide right now?
Right now, let's somebody.
It's fine, it's fine. I'm not a pickleball player, I don't even know what you do to play.
I I know.
Just looking at this, the lines seem like they're so close. How come the line of a tennis court doesn't work?
It's bigger.
Longer, bigger.
It's a lot bigger.
Tennis court is bigger.
See, that's the.
This is designed for low impact for senior citizens.
Yeah, yeah.
But there are many people playing it now. Young kids are playing with their grandparents.
It's like playing pickleball.
We have twenty-year-olds playing with us.
It's a ba- it's a, basically, it's a double badminton court.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
It's a double badminton court, is what it is.
Yeah, so without your pickleball line, how much more does it add to that court if you don't have a line? Like if you didn't.
It's what, you can't play it now.
So you just can't play it, it's just a not option.
Yeah, you can't. Your your boundaries are, you know, they're all different. It would be like playing tennis on a badminton court.
So could one of the things be in the interim of actually building the court, which actually sounds really cool, to actually build this court for anybody to come in at any time and use, to how it works? Where it's built instead of like, you know, having a.
Yeah, just like the tennis court.
If you build them, they will come.
So one of the things would be in the interim, just paint those lines in the tennis court.
Yeah.
Just because it doesn't sound like it's a difficult issue here.
Yeah.
And then spend a little bit of money to get that line reducer on there. And then you can turn those two tennis courts that you have over here right now, two, right? Is that what we have?
There's two.
Two tennis courts.
Tennis court into at least, no, just, no, just into one for each.
Four.
I mean, you hear me out with what I'm saying. Instead of like worrying about those nets, those nets that you have to provide, somebody has to provide, just get two, the two lines for the two nets and make that into those two courts in the interim until you guys can get the permanent one in place, which will have four.
It would be better what we have now, just put just put the lines on one.
At the beginning, yeah.
All the pickleballers move away. We don't have any more pickleballers in New Freedom. Are those lines able to be removed?
Yes, absolutely. There's probably going to be some fainting, and you might have to scrub it or or whatever, but yeah, like the lines can be removed.
It's just like in your tennis court, where the lines go, you know, you have to re-surface or reface the, that happens over time.
So without refacing the whole court, are you able to paint the court? Like, say, say we put these lines down, five years from now, there, nobody's around here, tennis players want it off, okay, fine, we'll take it off. Do you paint the top of that court to get those lines to go away if they're there? Or do you have to resurface the whole thing?
At that point, you probably would have to.
I I don't, I don't.
I saw in in research that there is almost an epoxy that you can use to cover everything up again. Um I would say at that point, yeah, you would have to re, not necessarily resurface, but at least repaint everything and start over fresh because if, otherwise, you're going to be grinding out the lines in order to get them out.
So you paint one court, now we don't want that, we want to change it. What would be the cost of repainting, would you just kind of estimate? Just, does everybody have an idea? If we had to repaint this court back to a tennis court?
Well, why would we do that?
Well, just like all the pickleballers moved away, now it's all a tennis court.
They're all moving in.
They're all moving in.
I'm just hypothetically.
I understand that, but I don't, I don't see, I don't see the logic of the ar- argument.
But because everybody is so against the lines, that I want to know if it changes, what's so.
I think what you have, what you have to say is, is there a problem with the lines? There's not.
The tennis people don't like it.
I mean, there's really no problem with the lines on.
I, the reason I I picked that picture is to show you how unobtrusive the lines, really, they they don't interfere with tennis at all.
I see that now, that we can get going.
Yeah, and I, I've taken, pickleball's taking too much of your time tonight. I'd like to thank you for considering it.
Did you have a cost to?
No, I'm suggesting you paint everything for pickleball and screw the tennis players. Just stop talking about pickleball.
I appreciate your.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um. Marcia, tell him to make a motion, we'll get on with it. Ranel, are you still here? Make a motion.
I don't know, you can make a motion, if you want to make a motion, put the lines on one court or both courts or.
Put the lines, put a line on one court and see how many come out and see how much for you to use it and how much it costs. Kind of a trial thing.
Yeah, I'm moving to that.
How about a trial thing?
I agree.
I just move.
Let's have a trial thing on one tennis court, how about that? I will make a motion that we'll have a trial on one tennis court, see what the cost factor is, how many people will come? How is that? We can pass that tonight, yes?
So you're going to put two courts on one tennis court and try it out?
Yeah, yeah, can we do that?
All right.
You're making a motion.
I make a motion for that?
Who's making the motion?
I'm making a motion.
All right, you're making the motion to modify one court.
One court, it's a trial thing?
One tennis court to make two pickleball courts.
Yeah.
All right, and then I think we need to define what type of marking.
Yeah, I I think we can coordinate and make sure that we're applying.
The correct material.
But I think they should be ones to apply, to apply.
Yes, yeah, I don't.
For three months assessing?
How?
You like what he likes.
I guess I'm a little concerned with the the temporary and assessing, um what are we using as a base? Like, what's?
Quantitative standard.
Yeah, well, how how we determine whether it's successful or not?
Well, people are going to use it.
I'm not trying to extend this, but.
Well, I think if you put, obviously, if you put two pickleball courts on one tennis court, people are going to come and play pickleball. I'm sure you'll get as much use in pickleball as you will in tennis, because you have literally dozens and dozens of people playing pickleball. I can't imagine that you, I don't think you need a test. I think you're really what you're making a motion for is just to put two pickleball courts on to allow pickleball to play in one tennis.
Because they want to play, they, you know, they want to get it going.
Yeah, exactly.
That's really what it is, right?
So, all right, so just to make sure we're all on the same page, so we have a motion and a second to modify one tennis court into two.
Into two.
Into two pickleball courts with temporary markings to be applied by the borough.
Yeah.
And they won't be removing the nets.
Well, yeah, you're not going to remove the nets, if you're going to memorialize with with two, you're not going to, the other one just serves as a divider.
Their own nets, though, and taking them.
If they would have.
Or they could use the one net that's there.
Okay, I said, no, you want to allow them to take down.
Because if we use it, if we use it like this, then they would use the existing net. If they want to put a temporary one going this way, you'll be serving back and forth. That's why you'd be one court here and one court on the far side.
You missed a president, Marcia, something to say.
Excuse me, Ryan, can we do this right away and still pursue getting grants or making their own courts?
That's what we're, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, but I mean, it wasn't in the motion, and I wasn't sure if that was part of the plan.
It's very important.
We just said we we want to do it.
Yeah.
We got two things going on at the same time.
Right, yeah, yeah.
By the way, the only thing that that I would ask is that Andrew checked, because we got grant one of the tennis courts in paper, that there's no, there's no, there's no problem with with doing something like this when when the state paid tennis courts, and now we've got one tennis court, one pickleball court, essentially, we don't have an issue with that.
I think you want to keep in mind that you're not taking away the tennis court. You're just putting some light lines on it to allow it to also be used for pickleball. So that if no one's on it playing tennis, pickleball people can go over and play pickleball. But it's not changing the tennis, it's still going to be a tennis court.
Tennis court is still a tennis court, right?
There are some pretty strict stipulations in DCNR grants regarding the use of, future use of the facility. So in in coordination with with this motion, I'll check with the regional advisor to make sure that that's successful.
Perfect, okay.
I think I don't, my, I think I would like to have it amended to say that it would be a contrasting color to what's already existing on the tennis court.
Well, yeah, it should should be contrasting.
That's the relative.
I agree on that one, yeah, so that you could see it easily.
Was that what it's like already in other places?
The pickleball and tennis, not that I've played either one, but the the courts that I've seen are 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 contrasting.
Okay.
But again, I mean, we've we've seen the same here.
Okay.
So we have the motion, we have the second, correct? Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, so, Ranel, are you still there? Do you go back to?
Still there.
All right, um we have a motion, we have a second, do we have additional comments? I think we've gotten everything out already.
I guess he'll, I'm sorry, but just want to make sure that we're continuing. But if if we're looking at building new courts as well, are we beginning to work with the engineer to develop a plan? Because that plan has been needed for grant funding.
I would take and continue the 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 pickleball project as as a separate um part.
Okay.
And then continue as you would with.
I do not mean to extend that, just wanted to clarify.
Okay, that's cute.
We're on the same page. All right, um all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good.
Opposed? Uh my vote is no, with even the red council.
You're kind. Hey, Ryan, I am going to have to go, I got to get a get a gill on this pump again.
Okay, good luck.
Good luck.
Hey, thank you.
All right. Um, oh, motion period.
I just want to memorialize in the minutes after doing the research day in the office that the REIT commission in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one signed a community center use fee of fifteen dollars per use. And they were billed in twenty nineteen, and in November, they were billed for three months at once. Then it went in January twenty twenty, they were billed for two months, and then in twenty-one, they were billed for one month. So there was, you know, there it was just coming, and it was, it was no consistency, and then.
You mean as far as billing monthly?
As billing monthly, and then in twenty twenty-two, all of a sudden, they get a bill, they didn't get a recharge, I believe, there was no bill coming, but then all of a sudden, they get a bill for three months. So Andrew and I discussed it and said they will start to be billed monthly. And then if they will, and I don't know if they already do, receive a statement of what their.
I was going to say, there was, there was some confusion in the past, and and I, in full disclosure, I did add to that confusion at the last REIT meeting by incorrectly stating that they were not charged the fifteen dollars per use, so I was, I was incorrect with that.
Sure, but do do they get a ex? Sure, but do, do they get a expense statement of, of monthly so that they know what is coming out of their funding, what, what they're being charged for? Because even I wrote in the rec fund expenditures, it's not even listed in here for, for use of a community center. It's not an expense for them. So I just want to get it clear.
No, it's a good point.
But then from my understanding, they're not charged for tennis. Only pickleball.
Outdoor tennis or indoor?
Indoor. Indoor tennis, they're not charged.
Well, why is, I don't, I think this predates you, I don't know.
I, I think, I think that, as I recall from being on rec, I think the, the understanding was that there was no charge for indoor tennis.
Okay, then, should, should we?
But I don't know, I couldn't put my finger on where it says it.
Yeah.
It's in the minutes.
Oh, you found, okay.
It's in the minutes. And from 2014.
At least in my mind, we should be consistent with, with both. If they're both using the same facility, they should either be charged the same or not charged the same. So what, I guess, we have a discussion on this, just in general?
I'm going to let them be charged. They'd be saying not charged at all.
We have a motion.
Well, I, yeah, I guess you need.
Not charged for tennis.
I think the, the one thing that you have to be.
Not charged for either?
The one thing you have to be cautious of is in, in the past, not saying that it would ever happen again, but in the past where there were charges, people, people would come forward and decide that they would team up with rec so to avoid charges. And I think that that is a problem, it's been a problem in the past. I, you know, there are costs associated with using the community center. I would probably lean towards charging them some flat rate or charging them some per use or whatever you want to call it, or per week, or come up with some rate. But there should be some, otherwise you're just transferring the cost of running the community center to the taxpayer.
Yeah, so they're, they're essentially $75 a week. Because they're, they're five days, $15 per day. Monday, Wednesday, Friday and Tuesday, Thursday, the day and the night.
And, and there's nothing wrong with that. We are going to have to have fees on programs because we're going, we're going to get a rec director, but they're only free for the first year. And then they're, and then they, right, so we're going to have to raise money to pay for the rec director too.
So we charge for volleyball now, right?
We charge for volleyball, right. And you can't really charge the citizens of New Freedom for using the community center and give it to rec for free. Not that rec isn't deserving, it's not, not a matter of being deserving, it's just a matter that you have to pay the heat and the rates.
Yeah, because otherwise, who's, who's already operating at a deficit for?
Question.
Go ahead.
So Eric, is it your opinion that we should be charging for the indoor tennis as well?
No, I just, I want it, I want it in the minutes. I'm not saying that they should or shouldn't. I want it, I, I spent hours trying, trying to track this all down because it's not being put in the minutes.
My question is, if we're charging for volleyball and we're charging for pickleball, why don't we charge for tennis?
Really? That's.
But, uh, what I think we're all.
I just want to memorialize whatever we're doing. I just, I'm trying to memorialize it so nobody is confused.
I'm sorry, Ryan, I didn't hear what you said.
I, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're charging volleyball at a different rate than the other ones? Because volleyball.
They're paying $30.
$30 an hour versus $15 per day, which is what pickleball is.
Their line is tennis pays zero.
Isn't volleyball part of rec?
Who is running volleyball?
It's not part of rec.
Why is tennis paying zero? Okay, that's my question.
That's a good question.
He said it's a separate organization for volleyball?
Yeah, same with, uh, field hockey.
So I would think we would treat our own rec council as for our, I think we would treat that differently, asking, why aren't you charging 30, you know?
We are different, but then we're even, even more different.
Yes, and that's, that's what I'm, I'm saying that.
That's a good thing.
Yes.
But then we're not being consistent with both sports. So how do we, I don't think we're going to solve this tonight. I think we should.
Put it on the agenda.
Table it, put it on the agenda.
On the agenda.
All right, so we'll, we'll move the motion.
And what, what are we table, what are we, what are we finding out in the next 30 days?
Well, it's just not on the agenda, so you can't really, not supposed to.
You can't decide anything.
True.
Well, I know, but not that it's deciding, but what, going forward for next month, what, what are we looking at to get ready for next month? What?
Well, I, you want my, my recommendation would be to charge something for tennis. I mean, I think there should be some fee paid by rec for tennis as well as, or.
Could it possibly just be a flat monthly fee for rec to do whatever they're doing?
We have, um. I mean, tennis, it looks like it's, um. No, this is just the summer tennis. So I guess we have to look at the, the usage for tennis for winter and see, you know.
So there's some research, research is going to go on in the next month. Okay.
They occupy the, the building in the same.
I don't think so, I think they're at the same time.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, is we need to, I mean, it might be that they charge, we charge tennis $15 a day for the use like, like we would for pickleball. No worries. Let them be consistent.
Pickleball and tennis, I think it's the same.
Yeah, I'm not saying that tennis has to be charged, I'm just saying I want to get it on the record what it is.
That's, that's fair. Okay, all right, so, what's that? Oh, okay. Um, so that was rec committees, business development. We have anything ahead? Fire and EMS funding?
I already mentioned that we're having a meeting on the 14th. Also, Todd has been informed that the, um, DCED has, um, come up with a, uh, someone for the peer-to-peer study, which is the next step in figuring out mergers and how this is all going to work for EMS and fire.
How many organizations are they up to right now?
Uh, well, they were actually going to have two more join, so I don't, I'm, I'm not sure I know what the result of was that. Did Todd say anything to you about?
Jacobus has joined.
Yeah, Jacobus has not yet, though.
Springfield and Tri-County?
Tri-County.
Yeah, Tri-County's in.
And then Jacobus, Navy.
Navy.
In the near future.
What's Tri-County? Try, try to meet these.
There's several, okay. Okay, uh, anything with infrastructure?
Dennis mentioned we had the meeting with, um, for the sewer treatment plant and the upgrades. It's, you know, they're going to, they're coming up with a feasibility study and we should have that in the next month, right?
Yes.
Uh, pickleboard, pickleball court. Tried to combine two words there, sorry about that. Personnel, nothing. Public safety. Susquehannet Centennial, he has dropped off.
Bernal said that they, they, their committee met again, they've come up with a logo. It's going to be the New Freedom Borough logo with, um, Susquehannet Centennial on it. And then the dates, you know, for the, you know, that'll be on the T-shirts and stuff that they could sell and raise money and.
Okay, correspondence? I think we're good. Public comment? Nope. All right, no executive session and I'll entertain the motion. Motion, seconded by Dave. I don't think we have to get all in favor for that one.
Okay. Okay. Good, thank you. Thank you. I, I meant to give it to you.
That's all right.
Okay. Okay, okay. Let's hit the road. Oh.
She said that, yeah.
Who's the company you use for, she's a sludge from the world. Is it that, you input it for many? Sure.
The sludge?
Yeah, the sludge.
Uh, well, they, that's part of the Sinigro contract for the land application, so.
My grandson.
All right. Are you going to get out?
Okay.
He just said.
I've, I've, for all I've said, like, I'm okay with mine, but I'm trying to say that they're wishing I knew.
I didn't know anything about this sludge, this. And how much, you know, how much it costs per truck and you know, we didn't get into it.
Yeah, that's all part of our contract for land application.
I was just surprised because.
Should just be a record button on the side.